Thank you, everybody in attendance. Want to thank our broadcast partners and our media partners who broadcast and report on our meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody to councils today and ask Mr. Clerk to start the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by Councillors Kompadich and Christian, resolved that the minutes of the joint council meeting of 2017-06-06 and regular council meeting of 2017-06-12 be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Declarations of pecuniary interest?
Councillor Nero.
Oh, nobody on the mics?
You're good?
Yep, okay, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Declaration on Agenda Item 6.4, RFP for Comprehensive Risk Assessment for Fire Services. My brother's employed by Sault Ste. Marie Fire Services.
Thank you. Councillor Schumaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items, 6.3, tender for Strath Clare Park Exterior Lighting, and the corresponding bylaw 11.1.2, as the successful proponent, a client of my law firm, and 6.10, as well as the corresponding 11.1.6 bylaw, as the successful proponent was, is again a client of the law firm.
Okay. Councillor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pecuniary interest, 6.18, traffic bylaw property owner on Albert Street West and spouse employed by police services.
Thank you, Councillor Turco. Anybody else? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Under Agenda Item 4, approved agendas presented, a motion by Councillors Kompadich and Christian, resolved that the agenda for the 2017-06-26 City Council Meeting and Addendum as presented be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 5, Proclamations and Delegations, our first item, Ontario 150, Councillor Myers has given us a video to play, and she may wish to introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We've been focusing a lot on Canada 150, and I think in a moment, the mayor will extend an invitation to the community about that. But it's also Ontario 150. So this is a neat YouTube video that we came across. We thought we would share it tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thought it was going again. I think we're going to segue from that into the Why I Love Canada matter on the agenda. So, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, lead us. Why I Love Canada, we have Haley Poole in attendance.[381.72][381.72](Applause).
Welcome, welcome to council, Haley. We're happy to have you here.
Hello, Mayor and city council. My name is Haley Poole, and I'm a grade five student at Saint Paul Calix Lake School. I live in the north in Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario. I love the freedom and the outdoors of being in the, and at the, in the Lake Superior provincial parks that we have. The colors of the leaves turning, the view of the lake, or sorry, and the view of the old lady lookout, and the finding of the coolest looking rocks along the shore, best of all, the northern lights. I've got to see with my family at Rabbit Blanket Lake Campground. This makes me appreciate the freedom of our country. Anyways, that's enough Why I Love Canada. I hope everyone could appreciate what, I hope everyone could appreciate what our country has to offer.[450.21][450.21](Applause).
Thank you, thank you very much, Haley, and thank you to all the students who submitted to the Why I Love Canada program that we put on. It was one of the great Canada 150 events that we did this year. I want to recognize again the mayor's office, particularly Lisa Bell, and also the city staff here who worked hard on Canada 150, along with Councillor Myers and Councillor Hoopinun. We have some great events. Canada Day is just around the corner. We want to invite everybody to celebrate Canada Day with us. Take a look at the city website. We have a rundown of all of the events that we have. We're really excited to say that we have Dr. Roberta Bondar coming home as our honorary Canada 150 ambassador. Certainly a privilege to be here in Sault Ste. Marie. We're looking forward to spending the day with her, and we welcome all of the community to come down and celebrate Canada 150 with us and Canada Day with us. We live in a tremendous country. As Haley has pointed out, it's a beautiful place, and we should all be proud to live here, and we look forward to celebrating together. So Haley, thank you again for coming today and reading to us. We appreciate it.[513.91][513.91](Applause).
Under Agenda Item 5.3, G Marconi Society Annual Italian Festival, Joe Rosetti, president. The G Marconi Society is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Mr. Rosetti. Mr. Sikoli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and all members of council. Thanks for having us here today. Just want to tell you that the Guillermo Marconi Society was founded as a non-for-profit organization which has its purpose in the advancement and fostering of Italian culture in our city. The Electra Marconi Society is a sister organization that has existed separately since 1932, and the Avanti Marconi Committee has been asked to work towards a revitalization, repurposing of the Marconi Club, which has been an icon of our Italian heritage in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, which was founded in 1912. The committee will continue to promote the Italian-Canadian heritage in the city of Sault Ste. Marie. To that end, the Marconi Club will be renamed to the Marconi Culture Centre. This will reflect our commitment to becoming the premier venue for cultural events in our community and bring it back to the prominence that it enjoyed in the past. Rosetta Sikoli has been hired as a general manager to lead the organization's revitalization and repurposing of our society. Our young people will have the opportunity to understand why Italian immigrants celebrate their immigration to Canada while maintaining their culture and have passed on to them the wine and sausage making and the cooking secrets of our grandfathers and grandmothers. Right now, Rosetta would like to talk to you further.
Thank you.
Hello, council and Mr. Mayor. July 9th is the Italian Festival. It is a day that we deem a celebration of our 105th year of being at the Marconi, and as the new general manager, I just want everyone to come out and enjoy the festivities. There will be food, there will be bocce lessons, we'll have card games in the taverna, and we're going to have a dinner and show that night, a concert with Rita Chirelli, an immigrant daughter that's from Hamilton, very well-known Canadian artist. So I would invite everyone to come down and enjoy.
Under Agenda Item 5.4, Poker Run, Megan Parlow, Events Coordinator, Tourism Sault Ste. Marie is in attendance, and Ian McMillan.
Sorry. Sorry, it's me. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Susan went through some of the Celebrate 150 events that are coming to Sault Ste. Marie, and we were, Tourism Sault Ste. Marie wanted to kind of do our part and bring an event that would be part of this fantastic celebration year. So I'm here today to please to announce to you formally that Tourism Sault Ste. Marie, along with the Ontario Tourism Marketing Partnership and Tourism Northern Ontario, will be bringing back the highly successful Can-Am President's Cup Poker Run on the August 4th to 6th long weekend to our city. I do have Megan Parlow here with us today, Megan, wherever she is, there she is. She was trying to escape. Megan's really doing all the heavy lifting on this event, so congratulations to her for helping make this very successful. After the fantastic turnout last year, both in terms of participating boats, but especially the general public who lined our shorelines on both sides of the river, we wanted to redouble our efforts and try and make the event even bigger for 2017. Last year, we had 20 boats from Ontario and Michigan, and this year, we hope to try to get that up over 30 to 40 boats. Early indications are that we will likely reach our goal. Some of the amazing boats from last year will be coming back, and many will remember them, and we just confirmed today that one of the premier offshore boats in the world, called My Way, will be attending the event this year. It's a 52-foot boat with twin jet engines attached to it. So you're going to hear that thing coming from miles away. As I mentioned earlier, the event begins on Friday, August 4th, with a community kickoff party at the Bondar Pavilion. There's no charge for the general public to attend, and we have live music presented by the Hustle Brothers, along with face painting and exhibits for the kids, vendors, food vendors, cash bar sponsored by Northern Breweries, Superior Breweries, and of course, the boats will be on display. Saturday is the actual poker run day, and the event will start with opening ceremonies at the Bondar Marina at 9:30, followed by the Parade of Power at 10:00 a.m., and at 10:30 sharp, we will have the Run the Throttle group start down the river. The boats will follow a similar course as last year, stopping first at Richard's Landing, then Hilton Beach, then Thessalon, before their return back to the Bondar Marina by about 4:30. Both Hilton Beach and Thessalon are also celebrating their community days on that same day, so it should be exciting all round. And on Sunday, of course, August 6th, we will begin offering the charity rides of a lifetime for people to come and have a chance to ride on these boats, with all of the proceeds going to Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Sault Ste. Marie. The rides cost $150 per adult and $60 for children, and you can register online at supokerun.com. For those from out of town, Tourism Sault Ste. Marie will be offering full accommodation and ride packages, also available online, so make sure to sign up soon, because there are a limited number of seats available for the charity rides. Being in the modern times, you can also follow us on Facebook at SSM Poker Run, and we're also looking for boat marshals to help keep these boats in the correct course in the river. So anyone that owns a boat that wants to float around and help us guide these boats around the course, simply call Megan at 705-541-7320, or email her at m-parlow, m-parlow@ssmedc.ca. And finally, I have about a two-minute video. We worked with the Ontario government last year and really brought in an amazing film crew, and just to get the engines rev for this year, but to show you how successful the event was last year, please bear with us with this short video. Thank you very much.
My name is Steve Sanford, and I've spent my entire life around boats. I've visited most of the waterfront communities in Ontario and written about many of them. So believe me when I tell you that Sault Ste. Marie is one of the best boating destinations in Ontario. It's not just the location that makes it great. It's in northern Ontario, surrounded by the rugged beauty of the Canadian Shield, and that makes for a scenic trip, but it's the actual layout of this city that got my attention during our recent visit. We were in town to cover the first annual Poker Runs of America President's Cup. It was billed as an exciting weekend full of fast boats, great food, with fun and entertainment for the whole family. The opening ceremony was scheduled for Friday evening at the Roberta Bondar Pavilion. There were vendors set up, and a live band was on hand to provide a great atmosphere. The poker run was to be run on Saturday, with what I think was the highlight of the weekend scheduled for Sunday. On Sunday, spectators could purchase a ticket for a 90-plus mile-per-hour ride in one of the boats, with all of the proceeds donated to a local charity. So with an exciting weekend lined up, and despite this being a work trip, I brought along my wife and 15-month-old son to help me explore this great family boating destination. Our room at the Delta Waterfront Hotel had a spectacular view of the St. Mary's River, so on Saturday morning, we lined up along the riverbank with thousands of other spectators to watch the boat set up for their run. The boat started at the marina, which is right downtown, and one by one, they paraded along the waterfront, making sure everyone who was gathered on the boardwalk got a great view. The poker run started right on time, and the flotilla participants headed off to their first stop. There were four stops scheduled for this event on both sides of the border, bringing the fun and excitement of this poker run to several of the small communities around Sault Ste. Marie. Each one an excellent boating destination in itself. We set out to explore the waterfront. Within a kilometer of the marina, we had plenty of things to choose from. There's a large shopping mall, a movie theater, several museums and an art gallery, a flea market, and a great downtown district with shops and restaurants. When the boats had returned and the poker run concluded, the participants headed to a reception at one of the Sioux's most prominent attractions, the Canadian Bush Plain Heritage Centre. The top prize was awarded to the team who collected the best poker hand, but the real winners of the event were the residents of Sault Ste. Marie. They have a beautiful city with a spectacular waterfront, and it's an ideal spot for visiting boaters. Every amenity a visiting boater would need is located within a short walk of the downtown marina. The area is rich with history and culture. The poker run itself was a tremendous success, with many of the participants saying it's one of the best first-time events they've ever attended. As someone who was there to cover the event for publication, I did thoroughly enjoy myself, but I enjoyed myself even more being there with my family and experiencing everything that this event and the city has to offer, especially for those of us that are boaters.[1086.01][1086.01](Applause).
So not only did we get a great video of the poker run, but as you can see, we got a great video for Sault Ste. Marie. So hopefully, we see everybody out for the event. It's going to be a great win this year. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity.
Ian, that was a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you.[1110.33][1110.33](Applause).
Under Agenda Item 5.5, Downtown Street Party, Josh Ingram, General Manager, Downtown Association is in attendance.
Hey, Josh.
Good afternoon. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Good, thank you. How are you doing?
Thank you. I'm very good, and thank you, councillors, for having me here. I'll try and be quick. It's hard to follow up a handsome guy like Ian.[1132.08][1132.08](Laughter). Not even listening. The 2017 Downtown Street Party is an event our board of directors, merchants, vendors, stakeholders, volunteers, and community members look forward to putting on each and every year in our downtown core. Every year is an amazing, family-friendly night, with 2017 being no exception. I'd like to quickly run off some of this year's programming, which will include refreshment tents in every block, bands, DJs, pop-up stages in every block, including talent displayed from recent newcomers to our community, snacks, jumbo games, and bouncy houses for kids, water balloon target practice, hopefully not on me, multiple barbecues and food stops, huge savings from our vendors, street workouts and yoga for those who are healthy, market vendors, photo booths, and much more. The Downtown Association is proud to host this event in partnership with our members and our sponsors. There are so many great things happening in downtown right now, from Councillor Hollingsworth's efforts in a heritage walking tour that are on their way to Fringe North, who are right next to me on the agenda list, as well as I saw the Ontario 150. We're proud with the Career Centre, in partnership with the Downtown Association, was awarded an Ontario 150 specific event, which we've been having a really hard time saying in the office. We keep saying Canada 150, but it's also Ontario 150, and it's good to be aware of that and be proud of our nation and also our province. So, to get back on track, please come down and join an event made for all ages and backgrounds in our community, the Downtown Street Party, July 13th, from 6:00 p.m. to officially 11:59 p.m.
Thank you very much, Josh. Appreciate it. Any questions for?[1237.15][1237.15](Applause).
Under Agenda Item 5.6, World Fringe Day, Tova Arbus is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Arbus.
Thank you very much.
You have a little follower here. What's his name?
I do. This is my son, Dove, our chairman of the board.
There we go. Welcome to council.
He's the one who's really in charge. Mr. Mayor, esteemed councillors, guests, thank you very much. I'm so pleased to be back with you again and delighted to have a real update for you as we get closer and closer to our very first Fringe North International Theatre Festival. It was wonderful to sit here in the audience and listen to all the exciting things that are coming up. This is a summer to be in Sault Ste. Marie, that's for sure. Canada 150, Ontario 150, everybody is celebrating, and so are we, because in addition to those fantastic events, it is also the 70th anniversary of the World Fringe Festival movement. Edinburgh, the mother of all fringe festivals, turned 70 this August. The first Canadian fringe was 1982 in Edmonton, and because of its success, fringes exploded all across Canada. We now have over 20, including Vancouver, Montreal, Calgary, London, North Bay, and now Sault Ste. Marie. So you heard me, some of you heard me talk about it before, that fringes are all different. We all follow a similar guideline to make sure that we follow this really successful model, but every fringe is shaped by its community, and so that means our fringe here in Sault Ste. Marie will be completely unique, and it gives us the freedom to really showcase our city and our community within this festival model. We all share the same artist-focused philosophy, artistic freedom, 100% of box office proceeds going back to pay the artists for living wages for those artists, and making the arts accessible like no other festival. We look to bring life into spaces that you don't typically see the arts in, bars, storefronts, empty spaces, the upstairs or basement of a church, and lots of other found spaces that we are excited to revitalize with some unexpected and exciting theatre this summer. So Fringe North is much more than just a festival for Sault Ste. Marie. We are official members of the Canadian Association of Fringe Festivals, and as CAF members, we are all pleased to be part of this worldwide celebration of the fringe movement and the 70th anniversary of Edinburgh Fringe. And so, in order to celebrate, we will be participating in the inaugural World Fringe Day on July 11th. Now fringes, I don't know if you know, started out as a protest event in 1947 to try to push the boundaries of what was accepted as theatre and make space for everyone, and it was so successful that first year in Edinburgh that now there are over 200 fringes across the globe. They started in May and will run right through till September. The concept of fringe transcends national boundaries and demonstrates real connectivity of the arts and culture. So we at Fringe North are excited to declare July 11th World Fringe Day in Sault Ste. Marie and look forward to having some real fun celebrating. And what a way to kick off our first year, let me tell you. I have a very quick update of some of the things you can expect from Fringe North this summer. So our official lineup of main stage productions and buskers is going to be coming in the next week. We have five different venues active and over 40 different participants from both local, national, and a few creeping to us from spots internationally, including a young man who's coming up from Brazil, so that'll be something to see. In collaboration with the Irmiting Heritage Discovery Centre, we are doing a very special Canada 150 stage that will feature up to 16 different performances showcasing a broad variety of artists and different voices, newcomer voices, indigenous voices, youth voices, and the gamut. Our Free Children's Fringe is getting bigger and bigger, working with many wonderful community partners to offer engaging and interactive free activities for kids, families, and all of us who are young at heart, including an improv stage, a costume corner, puppet making, juggling, mask making, and a lot more that's coming our way. We will have international street food and a cultural celebration of music and dance in partnership with the New to the Sioux and other community partners, and we will see local musicians, buskers, storytellers onstage at the Bondar Pavilion. We are also pleased to announce a concurrent 10-day fine art exhibition in collaboration with the Arts Council, and it's planned for vacant spaces and participating property owners along Queen Street, and will showcase a number of different local artists in many expected and unexpected ways. Of course, the return of buskers to Sault Ste. Marie has been widely received, and very excited to say that we have buskers coming from all over the place to come get back to Sault Ste. Marie, some of whom were here for Busker Fest before and could not wait to come back to our little northern Ontario, so that's pretty exciting for us. And lots more. I mean, I could sit here and talk at you for hours, but I think what I will finish with is that we could not do this without all of the community support that we've had, verbally, with donations, sponsors coming forward, other organizations like the Downtown Association, who have been such a big part of getting us to this point, the Arts Council, many, many others, who have all said, yes, we want this to happen, and because of all of those voices and all of that support, here we are saying, Mr. Mayor, members of council, please join us in declaring July 11th World Fringe Day in Sault Ste. Marie and kicking off the Summer of Fringe 2017.
I'm going to do that right now, but Councillor Myers has a question or a comment first.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want, good job, Tova. Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that we get kind of, I guess, enthused and concentrated on our own city-hosted events, but the Fringe Festival is on our Canada 150 calendar as well on the city's website, so please, folks, I'm just going to keep hammering away at this throughout the whole year, go to the city's community calendar, and you're going to find all these great events on there, and, Tova, I know you guys did a good job getting us the information to get up on there. A lot of the details are there. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you did on this, Ms. Arbus. I know you and a group of volunteers have really done a tremendous amount of work. We appreciate it.
We have a great team. Thank you very much.
So whereas the city of Sault Ste. Marie has expressed support for Fringe North International Theatre Festival, an annual non-for-profit festival premiering in Sault Ste. Marie August 10th to 20th, 2017, and whereas Fringe North is the newest member of the Canadian Association of Fringe Festivals and the World Congress of Fringe Festivals, and whereas Fringe North is participating in World Fringe Day on July 11th, 2017, as fringes from around the world celebrate art, culture, and theatre, and the milestone to 70 years of fringe festivals. Now therefore, I, Christian Province Annual Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby declare July 11th, 2017, as World Fringe Day in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, and encourage residents to help Fringe North celebrate with the rest of the world, the accomplishment of fringe festivals, and this important milestone. Thank you.[1695.32][1695.32](Applause). So before we move on, I think it's worth pointing out, Tova did, Ontario and Canada 150 celebrations, the Italian Festival, the Poker Run, the Downtown Street Party, like there's lots of very fun, positive things happening. I think we should take a pause and recognize that and thank all of the great people in our community who are making those things happen. So thank you to the community.[1720.01][1720.01](Applause).
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this brings us to our first business item of the night, 5.7, Community Adjustment Committee. Gail Broad, Chair, Community Adjustment Committee is in attendance, and we have, under Agenda Item 7.1.1, the final report of the committee and the following motion, a motion by Councillors Kompadich and Christian, resolved that the report of the Chief Administrative Officer concerning the final recommendations of the Community Adjustment Committee be received, and that city council, one, endorse the plan as a key stakeholder, two, assign responsibility for coordinating implementation to the community development and enterprise services, three, request a report outlining the specific steps and required resources to implement the recommendations of the committee, and four, thank the Community Adjustment Committee members, chair, project coordinator, and all those involved for the preparation of this report.
Okay, so I think we're starting with you, Gail.
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks to Mayor and city council for giving us this opportunity to present our final plan. plan. We've been before, Council, a couple of times previously to provide you with updates on the status and I'm very, very pleased on behalf of the Community Adjustment Committee to be able to present to you our final report. Before I begin, I just want to say I'm not going to walk you all the way through all of the report. What you see up on the screen and what each of you, I believe, have been presented with in your package is a summary document of the report that outlines primarily the process that we went through as well as the main recommendations that we came out. There's much, much more detail in a much larger report and that report will be published and available within a month or so, but right now, I've just been advised that the summary report, which contains the main recommendations, has just gone live on our website at futuressm.com. And so, please, for the general public, feel free to access it there and again, you'll see that we're still inviting the public to continue to work with us because we believe this is a foundational report, but will require the whole community to work towards achieving its outcomes. So tonight I want to say some special thank yous. First of all, to the Ministry of Advanced Education and Skills Development and the city for providing the funding that made it possible to do this planning work. Of course, without funding, we would never be able to do the kind of work that was required and we really appreciate that. And to Mayor and Council, I also want to extend a special thank you for the confidence that you showed in the committee itself and in the work that we did in developing this community plan for Sault Ste. Marie. I do want to assure you that all of the ministry requirements have been met, we've submitted our final report to them and we have met all of the obligations, so you can feel confident that your, I guess, legal and fiduciary duties to the ministry have been fulfilled at this point. The first group of people that I really want to thank are the 16 members of the Community Adjustment Committee who attended many, many meetings and thought very carefully and guided this work from start to finish. Those individuals came from all walks of life, we had business people, we had people from organized labor, we had folks from the educational sector, financial sectors, many different organizations were represented on that Adjustment Committee. And it was that diversity of perspectives that really provided us, I think, with the input that was necessary to come up with the plan that we are proud to present to you tonight. So to those 16 members as well as five resource people who regularly attended our meetings and provided their expertise and guidance, again, to us on many occasions when we required some additional insight into a particular sector, we are very, very grateful for the work that they have done. Over 5,000 people participated in this plan that you see before you. And I want to just speak briefly about the process that we undertook. There was very strong feelings from the Community Adjustment Committee that what we wanted to come out of this was a strong foundation that we could build on. We felt that we needed to make sure that we had the proper foundation in place for Sault Ste. Marie to really realize its full potential. And people were very clear, from the beginning, the Community Adjustment Committee members were very clear that we have a great community here and we need to provide the foundation that we need to, for the community to really be able to realize the benefits, not only of the businesses that we have here, but of the people that we have here, of the environment that we have, that we are so fortunate to live in this spot. And of course, this evening, the many different celebratory events that are being scheduled illustrate, I think, very clearly that. So the process that we started with was one that required some good, solid research and that took us longer than we anticipated, it was more difficult than we thought to bring together all the information that we needed. But in the end, by about three or four months into our term, around the turn of the year into 2017, we were able to put together a series of fact sheets. And you'll recall when I was here in January, we demonstrated the social media, the website that was designed, that really illustrated where we were at as a community, both the good and the bad, and even occasionally a little bit of ugly. But we saw a lot of very wonderful things that were happening in our community as well as many challenges and barriers. And over the course of January to March, we had tremendous participation from the community. Many organizations came forward and offered to host meetings with their organization or to host open houses at their locations. So we were able to engage with a wide range of citizens. We had meetings with folks ranging from the Chamber of Commerce to the soup kitchen. We met with educational folks, students, as well as presidents of the university. So we had a really wide range of participation, as I said, over almost 5,000 people participated in one way, shape or another, and provided us with some very constructive ideas about the way forward. So the foundation and our report that you see before you recommends very strongly an approach, an approach that is supported by four pillars. So we see that although certainly economic diversity and optimal growth is one of those pillars that we spent a great deal of time debating, discussing, and researching, we also looked very closely at other sectors of the community. You know, our economy is only built by healthy people who are well-educated, who are creative, who are able to realize their potential. And we recognize that there was work that needed to be done there, as well as, again, tremendous opportunities for us. And so you'll see that social equity is also one of the pillars that we adopted. A third pillar that we adopted was the cultural vitality and tonight, we've just heard about some of the pieces of what makes a culturally vital community as we celebrate aspects of our heritage and events that engage many of us in sometimes special activities that are special interests that we have and others speak to all of us in terms of the heritage and the experiences that we have and that we can share with one another. We also recognize that the time of having to choose between a healthy environment and a healthy economy is well behind us. And so the fourth pillar that we've adopted as part of our approach to creating greater resilience within our community is environmental sustainability. And this reflects very much, these four pillars, the four-pillar approach reflects very much what the best research today tells us is the future for resilient communities. So we feel that by using, building on the work that previous organizations have done, planning committees, many, many, again, many, many members of our community, as well as some of the initiatives that Council itself had already undertaken in terms of some of the restructuring that you've been doing within the city itself. It built on that in order to bring us to a place where we can celebrate our people, you know, the people who are here, who contribute so much, as we've just been indicated this evening, the place that we live in, that became a real centerpiece, I think, of the discussions, many of the discussions that the committee had, to achieve the prosperity that we all want for the future. And it calls on the entire community to continue to engage with each other in achieving these goals. So I look forward to hearing your feedback on the work that we've been doing and I hope very much that you will be able to adopt this plan in the spirit that it is intended to give you a strategy and a foundation for the future of Sault Ste. Marie.
Before we move on, council, before we get to questions, I'll start with you, Councilor Hoopanen, but before we do, I want to just, I want to thank Gail, I mean, and Katie. Katie, if you can just stand up so everybody could see you there. So they, these two had a very challenging task. It's easy to listen and it's a good thing to listen. It's entirely another thing to try and take a lot of opinion, and sometimes disparate opinion, and some different opinion, and take that and shape it into a consensus. And the committee worked very hard to do that and I want to acknowledge Gail and committee, Gail and Katie for their work in playing that role. So thank you both for a lot of hours spent on this and a lot of time invested in, so thank you both. And also, and I'm gonna say these names because I want to thank each of these people, I'd also like to thank the committee members, Michael Birch, Dan Freya, Aldo Greco, Donna Hilsinger, Paul Johnson, Michelle McLeve Kennedy, Don McConnell, Patty Morrow, Mike Nadeau, Robert Reed, Lucia Reese, Linda Ryan, Lori Zepa, and Tom Vare. As challenging as it is to be in the group and have to synthesize the opinion, it's also challenging to be part of the group. And you folks, all of those committee members, you put in a lot of hours and we read a lot of material and I think we had some pretty frank and somber discussions about the community and where it's at and how we felt about that. And so I want to, I want to thank you for your earnestness and I want to thank you for your respectfulness and how you treated each other and the patience with which you approached the process and helped to come to its conclusion. The resources, Robert Tong, Tom Dodds, Jonathan Coolman, Christine Kucher, and Al Horstman, thank you for providing us with the support and information we needed. I can say from my perspective, I went into this after I spent quite a bit of time on my own through the mayor's office and the planning department, doing a community consultation and listening to people. I think there was roughly 90 people in groups that we sat with and we heard a lot of the same themes and a lot of the same ideas that you see in this report. And I see this report very much as a starting point for us and something that is frankly like a living tree, a growing document that will grow over time. And I want to thank you, Gail, Katie, and the entire committee for your work, your effort. I think you came up with a product that we can be proud of and that demonstrates that we worked hard at it and that we'll continue to work hard because there is a consensus that we're all very fortunate and that we all have a tremendous community, but that it could be, it could be a vibrant community and a stronger community and it needs some, needs some attention and it needs some focus, but it certainly has the goodwill and it certainly has the human capacity to move forward. So I thank you for the work you did in that respect. So we'll take any questions of the committee itself through Gail from council and then we have any correct questions you may have of staff and the attended staff report. We'll start with Councilor Hoopanen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Gail and Katie, it was an excellent report, I enjoyed reading it and I look forward to the report in more detail. I have to mention too that I really like the, "Together we will bend the curve in the right direction." I really like that and I think this is a really good start and I think we will do it. So thank you for getting us pointed in the right direction. Now I do have just one concern that I, when I read the report on page three, the social health and wellbeing, and underneath it, it said, "Too many of our children are going to school hungry." That really bothered me. I thought that we had enough programs in place from different organizations that provided breakfast for kids. So is that a fact that you did find?
There's many children in the city that are going to school hungry, they are being fed when they arrive at school, I'm happy to report, that many of the schools, in fact, I believe, I understand that all of the schools now are delivering, that there is food in the fridges and available to students. So once they get to school, they are receiving, but what it's an indicator of is that at home, there's insufficient funds to provide adequately for the children in our community.
Oh, that's great, okay, so now we all know that when they get there, at least they have some food, so thank you very much, Gail. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And a lot of the, it should be, we left the website up and the fact sheets are there that this is drawn from, so you can go to the website and engage and see some of the information that the community compiled. Anything else for Councilor Fata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you mentioned that there were about 5,000 people that had input in this exercise?
That's correct.
And that included just people, surveys, one-on-ones?
That was, yes, that was, of course, many people came online, the social media certainly reached a lot of people that were not going to be able to reach through committee meetings or through open houses and various, you know, hosted events that organizations held for their members and memberships. So many more people joined us through online participation. But what's interesting is that many of those folks didn't just join and look at the site, they also sent comments back. And of course, the site was designed to really engage people, so we encouraged people at every opportunity to ask us questions or provide their comments, their feedback, their ideas. And you'll see even in this document, even as we finish it, we're still monitoring the website and still collecting that information.
It's interesting that you, in the report, it says that the expectation or the, hopefully the desire is that the population of Sault Ste. Marie will be 100,000 by the year 2037. And I think back to the early 80s and when some very wise people said that we were going to be 100,000 by the year 2000. I think it's safe to say that there's very difficult to make statements like that, I mean, even the EDC with their, you know, hands-on issues of economic development where you have concrete evidence of something happening, in a sense where there's, I like to call it brick and mortar, where you see, where you see something being built, you know it's, these people are serious, they're gonna come in here, they're gonna create so many jobs, and it's easier to work with that mindset than through this report here. But when is the last date that this committee will be meeting, like this, that this exercise, this will cease? Is there a date that?
Our committee has concluded its meetings now, so we're now handing this report over. You'll see in the recommendations that we've recommended that the deputy CAO's office be charged with carrying forward into the next phase, and the next phase, of course, is implementation. And because we do feel that the entire load of responsibility for implementing the plan cannot be simply cast back on the shoulders of city council or city staff, but it really is a community plan, it's a plan that is intended to engage and involve the community throughout. So we have suggested that there be an ongoing community advisory committee that would continue to work with the city in coordinating the implementation of this plan so that it's not, although perhaps some of the primary impetus may come from City Hall, we certainly hope that it will, we recognize that it needs to be a full engagement of the whole community. We can't just, we can't say that City Hall is going to expand Sioux College and Elgoma University, for example, that's, those organizations need to work with the city in a comprehensive way, in a cohesive way, in order to achieve some of the goals that we've set out, for sure.
Can you just remind the listeners of the cost of the total project?
For the planning stage, there was $250,000 allocated for the development of the plan itself.
You certainly had some very good people, some very good local individuals that were involved with this, there's no doubt that you had There's no doubt that you had expertise available to you, and I'm sure that that added to the success of the project. If someone were to tell you, as has happened in the past, that this, that this package will end up on a shelf somewhere and slowly collect dust, as has been the case in the past, many projects that have been done here have ended up on shelves, what would be your answer to that?
Well, I think that there's already been indications that a number of the ideas that are advanced in this plan are already being started and underway in various community organizations across the city, as well as what has already taken place within the city itself. So some of the, the ideas and concepts here have really built on work, or as these ideas emerged back in January, some people have already been taking action on some of the recommendations that we've put forward. So I don't want to isolate a particular organization or a particular individual, but I, I think that we will see that many of these, these concepts are already, at least the beginnings of, of change are already happening. One of the things that we decided to do as a committee to, to demonstrate, I suppose, what we see as a real changing attitude around the city in terms of people feeling more optimistic about the future and, and working to celebrate our heritage and culture and history that we have here is that, that the, we've translated this document, the summary document, into three languages to recognize and acknowledge the, the history of this place. So it will be available in English, French, and Anishinaabe Moan, and we think, we hope that that sends a message about the, the open arms and welcoming attitudes that we have, not only towards new immigrants, but also to our historical neighbors and the historical caretakers and stewards of this land, the Anishinaabe peoples. And of course, we also are, have identified that, that it's, Sault Ste. Marie was home to the Maiti people of the province of Ontario as well. And so we have a very rich cultural heritage for us to celebrate, as, as other folks tonight were demonstrating much better than I can, so.
Gail, I'd like to add to that point. Counselor Fatah, I, I don't think that we could accept or should accept the proposition that those other documents sat on a shelf. I mean, Counselor Button started the Building a Story to Your Community Initiative, and then we had the Destiny Sault Ste. Marie Initiative. And one of the things that we found in this process is we looked at those initiatives and we looked at that previous work, and, you know, a lot of work has been done. So, you know, every time we come together as a community and we talk about where we are and we talk about where we want to be, it's beneficial. And every one of those reports marked a time when the community came together and tried to do this, and this is a further effort to continue to try. And I think in that effort, we will find success. So I just, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with the proposition that the previous reports or efforts sat on a shelf. I think that they were valuable in and of themselves, and there were times when the community came together to address its circumstances and look at the future. And I think every time the community does that, it's positive.
I would also like to just mention, and I didn't in my opening remarks, but I would like to say that the mayor raised many difficult challenges as part of his role to, in, in, in participating in the committee on behalf of counsel. And certainly, that was one of the, the areas that he raised a number of times was, you know, we don't want a report that sits on a shelf. And certainly, I think that this is a very action-oriented report, and I, I think it does support and is built on that foundation of previous work by many, many community members, for sure.
I just want to add one point, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Everything that's going on in this report is certainly great, and it looks great on paper. I mean, in reality, it will, it will take its due course, there'll be input by various stakeholders, but I think the bottom line to any, a strong foundation in any community is economics, straight, simple economics. We talk about kids going to school hungry, we talk about the underprivileged, we talk about things. If you have a strong economy, and I'm trying to stress the fact that what economic development does in terms of their input, what innovation does in terms of their input, those are the things that will make a strong community. Lots of what's, what's being said here is, to me, is hypothetical. It's, 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 it's kind of like, it'd be nice if it works out, but bottom line is if people are working, if people are, have an opportunity to, to, to apply for jobs that are available, if a city has a strong economy, whether it's small business or whether it's new business coming in, whether it's, that's where a lot of these issues are going to be resolved in themselves, not through dialogue.
Frank, I want, I want to speak to that because it's a really important point you're raising, and it was a point that we, whatever you want to add afterwards, any committee member, you can. But as a report that, this is a point that I spent a lot of time thinking about and the committee spent a lot of time focused on. You really can't divide the social welfare of our community from its economic welfare. They're not divisible. And one of the things we heard time and again, one of the things I heard time again during the mayor's roundtable, one of the things that this committee heard time again, is for people, there's two different aspects. We have some labor force issues. So we have employers or different people who might be in Sault Ste. Marie or might want to locate to Sault Ste. Marie, who would be concerned on whether the human resource is here, either for their business, whatever type of business they have, or the human resource can be developed here. And we have a number of people that are here that aren't in the workforce, so there's a disconnect there. And some of the people aren't in the workforce because of social equity issues, and some of the people aren't in the workforce because of the, the, the lack of opportunity in their own lives. The reality is, we have to develop our workforce, but it's not just a simple thing of getting a job here. Now employers are looking at a place and saying, "Well, you have the people that I need to hire there." And that's about developing your community, and it's about developing your workforce. And you have to have a community, the one that people want to live in, that those people that have those skill sets will want to move to and live in, that they have the things that they want to do, that they have the cultural vitality that they're looking for. And then you have to have the kids, you have to have the people in your community that are growing up in your community, you have to have them finishing high school, right? So we have some basic labor jobs where people are not filling those jobs. You know, I heard from employers that they weren't able to find the engineers that they were looking for. So you have to develop and build the community that people want to live in, but you also have to develop and build the community that's fair and equitable and that people have opportunity in so that they finish high school and that they, they can apply for those jobs. It's not just a matter of actually landing a job. And the EDC, I'm sure, will agree with this point, I see Tom looking at me over there, because these are points that we discussed at length at the committee. It's not just a matter of going out there and attracting and telling a company to come to your community. Municipalities are competitive now, and we have to build the community that we want to be, and we have to build a community that people are excited to live in, that they feel good living in, that they feel safe living in, that they feel they have opportunity in. And it's not just about getting somebody to build some kind of operation so we have jobs here, because primary, employers are primarily concerned with whether or not they can find the human resource they need in your community. I met with 20 different businesses when I was in Ottawa a couple of weeks ago, Tom and the EDC, every time they've actually asked me to get together with a business, I have. We've done a number with the UP team lately, the Lottery and Gaming team. We're trying to attract Lottery and Gaming businesses here, and I get asked the same question every time. And Tom, Tom and Tom will tell you, I give the same answer every time. Yes, we can. And that question is, can you provide the human resource that we need? And my answer is always, yes, we can. I'm entirely sure in every piece, but I, in an immediate sense, but I believe we can. I believe we can if we focus on some of these things. And the reason why is I sincerely believe, having lived in Halifax and having lived in Ottawa and having lived in Waterloo and having lived in Toronto and having been everywhere in this country but Newfoundland, that this is one of the best communities to live in in the country. But there are some things that we have to get in order first, and this report deals directly with that. And I believe we will develop those human resources, and I believe once we are in a position to deliver those human resources, the economy will follow and employment will come. But we, we no longer can divide and divorce this notion of developing an economy as separate from developing our community. They're one in the same, and they go together. And I think that one of the big wins in this report is we had the community come together and say that. And I think that we have to endorse that, and we have to move forward in that perspective and in that spirit. Anything else?
I think you answered it extremely well.
Those your questions, Counselor Fatah?
Yes.
Counselor Christian? I have you too, Counselor Button. Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
No, I just, congratulations on the report. You know, it's, it's, it is a good report. There's a lot of aspirational visions and all of that stuff, and we realize that that's a starting point. So obviously, it's in the execution, right? So I, I just want to say that we have to give this document a chance, we have to give this philosophy a chance, we have to give this plan a chance. Anybody that's watching, who is negative out there or skeptical, I think you might be making a mistake. And I think anybody out there watching who doesn't feel that they need to participate in some way, whether it's that they don't belong to an association or they, they're not really connected outside of their family, job, and home, I think that's a mistake. In order for us to succeed, in order for this document to succeed, we all have to be part of the solution. It's not just a statement, it's true. We're in this together, and we need to make it work. So I encourage anybody, first of all, to be positive. We have no choice, we have to remain positive, and we need to move forward and execute the plan because there are some very good philosophies and points in here. The other thing is counsel needs to, I encourage all counselors, as I'm sure they will, will get involved in the execution of this. I think it's paramount that everybody on council be part of some organization, some, some silo in this plan. We have to get involved. I, for one, as a teacher, am very interested in the education part. I certainly see the connection between building our workforce and a possible disconnect, say, even at the high school level, about career opportunities that we may be able to develop in Sault Ste. Marie. I think it's important to get our post-secondary education institutions involved, but you've got to step it back even further. We have to make sure at the high school level that administration and teachers are aware of what's happening and perhaps guide students who otherwise haven't made a decision yet. We can't leave any stone unturned. I'm a firm believer that our post-secondary educational institutions will play a, a great role in what we develop going forward. The steel industry is important in Sault Ste. Marie, but it can't be the only thing in Sault Ste. Marie. We need to move forward. So I support this, and from a personal standpoint, I'm on board. And so whenever you need me to join, I'm there.
Okay, thank you.
Tom will talk more about that.
Some days to come.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. I guess, question. So I understand that another report's coming, it's being worked on?
No, it's, the larger-
What's the difference?
The, the larger report, this is, this is one that's, that's easily kind of accessible, and it's a lot shorter. The larger report was very, very long, and that's essentially being copy-edited to make sure that there are no, like, it's just being cleaned up, but it's, it's a very, very long, much more detailed, the report. The committees, the subcommittees that were part of the larger committee did a tremendous amount of work, and then that had to come back to the committee and they had to, to go through that and, and deal with it a bit. So I think it's largely administrative, but it's, this, this, we pared this down significantly so it would be easier for everybody to, to review and get their mind around. The larger one's very dense and substantial.
What the larger one, if I might just add to that, what the larger one does is, is it documents all the research that was done so that, in looking at it, rather than just making an assertion that the best evidence today is a four-pillar approach, it actually documents where all of that, that research has built to that, to that conclusion. And so the larger report has all of those, those details that anyone who is concerned about the research that we used for, you know, for the basis of our, our conclusions can be confident in, in the credibility of our sources and so on.
Just a few more questions. So I understand that this report is more like a general, high-level overview.
Yeah, it's, it's higher level, but it takes a real kind of, we took the real critical things out of the larger report.
Right, which is fair. So as we go on, and as you said, it's going to be housed with our deputy CIO, and so I'm under the assumption that, like, for instance, the roundtable, how the roundtable will act, the individuals that'll be at the roundtable will all be figured out at a later date in criteria?
Yeah, so we have to, what's gonna, we're here first, and then what we're going to do is, is we're going to go out and we're going to meet with other, you know, community leaders and community stakeholders and go through the report and what we did, and then ask for them to sign on. But as, 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 sort of, let's say, an accountability and overriding management mechanism to make sure we keep on moving ahead, we're hoping to implement the recommendation that we have around table. But as Tom has worked through that, and that roundtable will have a number of other tables that will kind of report up to it, but those all require the participation of the community, right? So, you know, we want Sioux College to participate, we want to go mute to participate, we want to go in public health to participate. So we have to go out and, and sign that up and do that. We're here first saying to you, we want you to participate, we want the city to be a key player in this and to tell Tom that we can go out and do our kind of show and, and get other support. But yeah, the, the, there, we've identified, although we haven't spoken to, so we're not going to kind of presume participation, but we've identified, generally speaking, who we would be asking to participate on these, on these ongoing committees.
Okay, and just one last comment. You mentioned about economic diversity and so forth, which is great. I just wanted to maybe suggest something. As you go forward in developing relationships with companies, and getting into an action item, but we can talk about offline, let's not forget about those people that are originally from Sault Ste. Marie that now live outside Sault Ste. Marie, that are successful, that have a long list of accomplishments, that may actually own a business outside of the city, that we should have a warm relationship with. It's easier to improve a warm relationship than a cold relationship and see, and create that list of individuals, see if they would come back to us hypothetically, or part of their research, part of their business, and so forth.
I agree with you, and Counselor Christian's looking at me because he's been raising that issue, and he's working on a project to do just that, so maybe you two can have that discussion offline, and, and we're 100% agree.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Counselor Button?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. The more I hear, you'd be glad to hear, the less I have to say. I applaud what has been said. I was critical of this getting off the ground about a year ago. I said, "We're too slow, let's go, let's go." So it's here. I'm, I'm pleased with the results. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for mentioning BECC. It was a great exercise, thousands of people. Did we drop the ball? No, I don't think we did. The community didn't, but it didn't keep going. You want to say this is an extension of BECC, that's fine, but we've got to be positive, we've got to reach out. I enjoy the four pillars, they're succinctly put, and I think it's something that everybody can, can relate to. And Mayor, you're saying now, well, I think, who said it for sure, but we've had individuals participating. Now we have to say, Sioux College, Algoma, Tenares, all of you people, Chamber of Commerce, how can you, do you endorse this? And I'm sure they will. How can you contribute to it? Can you make it work for us? It's the implementation that, obviously, I'm saying the obvious, that's going to be the key. And my, my ward one mate said, engage. It's up to us, too. Don't say everybody else, you know, council endorses this as a group, but as individuals. Is there something that you can latch on to? And it's going to sound, I shouldn't bring it up at this point. I met with the two chiefs, the two reserve chiefs last week with a private developer, and Mike Delfry started all this. And this individual wants to go from here to here in a very, very big way. It's very real, it's very, so that is one initiative. And hopefully, and I believe the EDC, Innovation Center, and other people have initiatives that are here now. Let's double down on these ones. Yes, this is important, this is a blueprint, let's implement it, but anything that's a real now, let's pursue it with all of the gusto that we can, and finances that we can possibly put forward. So, well done, well said, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Gail, for, for good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Button, and I concur. Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank the, everyone on the committee for the work that they, was involved in bringing back this report. I have one question. We show a curve that brings us to 20.7, and we have a list- And we have a list of recommendations. Is it the thought of the committee that the recommendations would take to 20 years?
The plan was, we decided that looking at the short term, that we really needed to look at a long-term plan. That we found that there were many pieces of things here, but that looking at things over a really short term, like five years, is not long enough to look at where we want to be. And that if we want to set some high goals for ourselves and some lofty goals, that we needed to recognize that there was lots of work between here and there. And so we've taken this look at 20 years ahead. I am sure that between now and 20 years, there will be many, many things that will happen that our committee could not possibly anticipate. And, but to, again, set those foundational pieces in place that will lead us over the longer term to where we want to go, that was the goal that the committee has adopted and I think will take us there. We need those foundational pieces. And again, that's part of why we saw these, you know, the research evidence is that you need to address all four of these pillars that we're suggesting are addressed. That we can't ignore any of them if we want to be successful in growing the community over the longer term. So, you know, the actual activities that we undertake five years from now, I mean, even a couple of years from now, are going to need to be reviewed. And that's why, again, we call for an ongoing monitoring group or an ongoing catalyst type of group from the community to keep feeding in that information. Even as we were doing our work over this past eight to 10 months, we found that lots of things were changing. And as we dug a little bit deeper into the facts of the situation, we found that there were lots of things we were unaware of that were happening in the city, that were beginning to develop, that could use some support and could potentially lead us in some new directions. So I think that that's something that has to be done on at least a semi-annual basis, is to review the actual activities that are undertaken. But in terms of doing so, you need to keep that emphasis on those four pillars so that all are growing and succeeding and, you know, living up to the, as I say, reaching the potential for both the people, the businesses, the environment, you know, reaching the potential that we really have here, you know, to be a really, a growing, thriving, vibrant place. I mean, it already is in many respects. But one of the things that we also realized was we don't market ourselves very well. It's kind of ironic that one of our recommendations is about self-promotion, but we seem to really under-promote what we have here and the quality of life that we have in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second question, Ms. Broad?
So then, based on that answer, when we pass this over to Community Development and Enterprise Services, does the bigger document have a roadmap for that department to start the implementation? Is there something there that says that the committee would like you to start with this area or a piece of all four areas from the pillars? Is that there?
I think that we started off trying to do recommendations that said, "Within three months, you'll do this. Within six months, you'll do that, dah, dah, dah." But we realized that that was, again, assuming that everything was going to remain stagnant, that nothing was going to change. That's not the case. In the world we live in today, things are constantly changing. So we do have, many of the recommendations have action items attached. The subcommittees, as the mayor indicated, did a lot of work around identifying, sometimes in more detail perhaps than was necessary for the committee. But that really is the work of implementation, is determining what can move and looking at what's possible right now. Doing, the committee itself is not able to do the kind of analysis of really looking at the sort of day-to-day, charting out, you know, the first 100 days of the activities. It needs to, more thought and analysis needed to be done on that.
There was a lot of discussion about that, Counsel Nero, because it was a central kind of point in the committee where the committee felt like it had to make sure it didn't overstep in direct implementation. And I think that that, in the end, they decided not to. And I think that was the wise move. Because, so these are recommendations and a theory and a philosophy of how we can proceed. But we can't direct how other bodies are going to implement something. We can't direct what the college should do or the university should do or any of our private sector companies should do. So like the implementation really is this stage. And frankly, it's going to be up to all of us to get involved and make that happen. So the first part of this, and I think at a further meeting, the deputy CEO will come back and show you from his perspective, and I've been working on it with him, how we can go about implementing this across the community and working with people to get it implemented. Because we recognize that as we get other community partners involved and their boards involved, like they might have some specific ideas on what can and can't happen or what should and should happen. So, you know, we had to be careful in that we didn't overreach and overstep our authority. It wasn't a committee that was structured to tell the community, you know, what it could do and how it could do it. It was a committee that was structured to come together and put together, frankly, you know, an aspirational plan, but one that was based on some facts and data. And that's what it did. So this next stage really is where either this will turn into something or we'll have a challenge moving forward. And that is for us to go out and get the buy-in and get the help. And we really see counsel essential to that. And I think Mr. Vera and I recognize that there are different ways that counselors, as Counsel Butland said, like in your individual capacity, could become involved. And we'll be going out and asking the other community agencies to sign up and figure out how they can help move forward. And so that'll be stage two. And so we're eager and we think we have a good plan to get there.
And if I might add, one of the things that we found throughout this entire process was tremendous willingness on the part of everyone we spoke to in the community to, you know, take up the torch, as it will, that they're more than willing to answer a call from the city for their assistance and time in helping move things forward.
Maybe, if I may, one final question, just on your last comments, Mr. Mayor. When we look at the direction that other agencies outside of the city corporation should take and would take according to the report, as the committee, I guess, or discussed, and I'm sure you would have, when you, the financial implications to implement this plan probably would require to mesh a couple of the agencies to have something happen at the same time. How do we handle the financial wherewithal when someone's ready and someone's not financially?
Well, we're just going to have to take that on a partner-by-partner basis, right? All of the, you know, agencies and partners in the community have budgets and they allocate those budgets every year. And part of it is about lining up plans and figuring out where there's overlap and figuring out where people can kind of join together and be of assistance. So, you know, some of this, as Gail has indicated, we've seen come together. So if we're looking at the social equity issue, we have already the Algoma Leadership Table that exists, which is a great table that a lot of people wouldn't know about, but a lot of the agencies in our community come together in that table. And they look at their resources and look at what they're doing and they have an open line of communication. That's just a group that needs some administrative resources. So when we look at, visit all these things and say, "What do we need to do to empower this group of people?" In lots of cases, Counsel Nero, surprisingly, it isn't a lot of money, right? It's actually a little bit of money or some administrative help or some support that maybe the city could provide. So that's kind of on a case-by-case basis. And I think what we'll see is, not getting too far ahead of ourselves, but when Mr. Vera comes back, like the study recommend groups that he's going to kind of introduce you to and show you to, they're going to uncover some of these opportunities and maybe some where some resources are needed. And then we'll have to sit down and have discussions with those partners about how we're going to come together and do that. And we'll just have to work through that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, and there is one final question. That wasn't.
Oh, you said that last time. I gotta list of two more here.
Just one final one because of another issue that we're going to deal with tonight. But these are decisions that usually fall in line with the term of councils. So when we approve this, and I'm sure it's going to be recommended, it's recommended we're going to approve it, how far can we go this term in making those financial decisions? Can we push it forward?
We won't make any monetary decisions that go outside of our term. We'll need the next term of council to decide to keep on supporting what we're doing. But we won't make any monetary decisions that, you know, that commit the corporation for a significant amount of time. And as you're aware, we could, let's say we did, like the 2019 council could very easily undo it, right? So you've got to hope that the, that, you know, there's enough kind of support in what you're doing and enough merit in what you're doing that a council wouldn't see fit to do that. But, you know, as you're aware, we make decisions in our term and then things live on or they don't.
Correct. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Broad.
Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly echo some of the other counselors who've spoken before me that, again, we have a blueprint here and a lot of aspirational, I think was the word Counselor Christian used, ideas. And it's never wrong to bring out the ideas. I guess when I looked at the very first slide, our locations are defining strengths, we live at the heart of the greatest threshold in the world. And on all the other things that are noted in the first two or three pages, I think it's exactly to documents I've read in the past. I came back here in 1989, we were just into the rapids. And then, as has been mentioned, Beck, Building Extraordinary Community, Destiny, CAT, Community Action Team, and then Homecoming in 1998. And I'm just going to come hearken back to what Counselor Christian said and Counsel Hollingsworth, or I guess Counsel Christian, say it, you said it for him. The whole idea behind Homecoming in 1998 was to try to build a Sioux Booster database of champions who are in critical places, who could come back, not come back, but come and help us through their influence. So I guess, on the one hand, there's nothing new under the sun. We repackage it, we give it the lingo of the day, and we try to give it new breath. You captured it earlier, Mr. Mayor. Why, and I guess Counsel Butland did too, why did these other plans, you know, rise and then not seem to live beyond five years or 10 years and so on and so forth? And on page three of our document, I think this is critical to note, "Our economy is stagnant and is largely dependent on a single industry." That's what it's been. It says Essar Algoma is in the midst of its third restructuring since 1992. And therein lies the issue. Each time Algoma Steel, Essar, back to Algoma, has gone through a restructuring, we rally as a community and try to, once again, deal with these issues. So what will make it different this time? And Dr. Broad, you said it a few moments ago, the ongoing monitoring. Absolutely critical, critical, critical. But the other piece I want to add with that is communication. The ongoing communication. What's happened in the past is we've had the great plans and everybody rallies and rah, 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 and like we're doing here tonight. And then the public never hears about it again. Those who are working very hard do. But I want to propose and challenge a little bit further than what my friend here was even doing. Counselors, we are the voice of the people. We have 12, 13 people here who know how to get to a segment of the community. They sure let us know when they want to get in touch with us. They know how to reach us. How do we reach them? And I would propose, Mr. Mayor and Dr. Broad, that we need to go right down into the community and hold town hall meetings and deliver this again and again and again and again over the next however number, whether it's 20 years, which I don't think I'll be here. But, don't start calling me Frank, but I don't mean you. Point being, it's the communication piece, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Broad. I know you're nodding your head and you live in Warren, too. We, and so do you, actually. We communicate and we've got to keep communicating. That's the critical piece I see on it. The monitoring will be done by the, it's a silly term to use, but I'll say the worker bees end of it. But for the public and everybody to get to understand this and continue to believe in it and really make it have legs this time and run, it's going to be the ongoing communication, Mr. Mayor. And that can't get lost, it just can't get lost. There's been thousands of hours of great work that I've seen since I've been back here in 1989 with all these different plans. And they all have a similarity to them. And a number of people have been involved in some in the past, too, if I look at the podium. But what can we do to make this different? We have got to communicate it and an ongoing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Myers. Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're all talking on the same page here and we're all reading from the same page, perhaps is a better expression. But, you know, I think as much as we all discuss it, this needs to become something that we always refer back to when we make these decisions at our council table. And I look at page 13, recommendation 12, "Foster pro-business and entrepreneurial environment in municipal government that encourages growth and development." Great, except that we have to follow it. We have to ensure that in all our decisions, we are looking to foster that growth, encourage growth, encourage development. I think there are, I would certainly, you know, be the first to note that there are times when we have not done that at this council table. So every time a decision is before us, not just that recommendation, all of them, but I looked at that one specifically because it's sort of overarching, we need to ensure that we are looking at these decisions with a view to this so that we are not taking steps backwards when we make our decisions at council. So that's not just for us as council, but I, you know, I challenge and perhaps a task is too hard of a word, but I certainly challenge our city staff to do the same. When they come test with the reports on development fees or building permit fees or things that would, you know, perhaps fly in the face of this recommendation or any of these recommendations, you have to look at them and really say, "Are we working against the recommendations in this report by doing this?" And so perhaps all of our city staff should get one of these. And each time they bring us a recommendation, it should say, "Is this working in favor of the recommendations in this report or against the recommendations in this report?" And that should be a consideration perhaps for us at council. So I think the report is great, thank you. Lots of hard work obviously went into it. But I want to see, when I go forward, that it is being followed, not just there to be, to make a talk of it. I want to see that it's actually being followed.
I can assure you that the people that put hours and hours and hours in their time in it would love to see it followed also, Counsel Shoemaker. Okay, I think everybody's had their say, that's wanted to have their say. Counsel Hollingsworth, you did put up your hand again. I'll go to you one more time and I think we're going to wrap up.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what my counselor mate, Susan Myers, said. Communication, but as I've said before, go out to the people as well. Use counsel, but go out to the John Rhodes Center and set up a booth and say, "Hey, this is the plan." And constantly throughout the next short while to, while it's being implemented, go out to where the people are. Station Mall, John Rhodes Center, and so forth. Websites are great, but set up an information booth. Use a student, use whoever to spread the word because we need to go out to the people instead of having them come to us.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Hollingsworth. Anything else, counsel? So we'll have a vote in the motion. All in favor, carried unanimously. Thank you, Katie, thank you, Dr. Broad, sorry.
And I just want to say thank you to all of you for the honor for leading, chairing the committee. It has been a real privilege to do this work on behalf of the community. And I just want to encourage you, with deference to Counsel Hollingsworth here, to keep your eye on the website. There will be a video coming out in the very near future as well as that longer document. So hopefully that will answer any further questions that people might have. Thanks again.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next item we will deal with is item 7.1.2, Council Vacancy Appointment Process. The report of myself is on the agenda. The report of myself is on the agenda, and a motion by councillors Compaugh, Oatch and Button resolved that the report concerning council vacancy appointment process be received as information. If there are any questions concerning the report itself, we can have them at this time and then accept it as information. We then would proceed to the appointment process as outlined in the report.
Before we proceed and take questions, I just want to recognize, and I, if I, I don't know everybody who did put their name in, so if I miss somebody, just please let me know, but I want to recognize that Dean Wade, is that correct? Luca Robaberro, Sam Sostero, and Luke Dufour are all in attendance. Did I miss anybody? So I thank the four of you for your applications and, and your attendance, and for the remaining people who did apply and are in attendance, we also thank them for their interest. So we're gonna take questions of the clerk first in the clerk's report, and then we'll get into the process. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. To city clerk, for the viewers at home, can you just reconfirm how the process will work for the viewers at home?
Certainly through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. The process will be, there are a list of 10 persons that have submitted the required forms to be considered for appointment. What will happen is out of that pool of 10, council is free to nominate at least one or as many as 10 to be considered for voting. The nominations do not need to be seconded. They can be made by an individual councillor. Once the nominations have closed, we will begin voting. If there is more than one person nominated, we will do the familiar runoff style voting that we do with appointing to boards and committees. The board, the votes will be done as a simultaneous recorded vote. You have pads of paper in which you will indicate the vote. You will vote for one of the names on the list. We will read out the results. If after the first round of voting, you, there is an interested person who receives seven or more votes, we will then proceed to appoint that person. If that is not the case, then the lowest vote getter on the, out of the group will drop off the ballot, and we will have another round of voting until we do get to the point where we have selected a person with seven or more.
The lowest drops off until somebody gets the majority. Counselor Fata?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
If, when it comes down to two candidates, and the vote is 6-5 amongst the councillors, will your vote, your voice, your vote be included or?
I, I have one vote. I vote with the rest of you. It's simultaneous.
So you can make it 6-6. That's why I'm asking that question.
But I wouldn't know it was 6-5. We, we all vote at the same time.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to and council, should we end up with two candidates and a vote that ends up as 6-6, we would then proceed to put the two names in a hat and draw a name from that hat. I would do the drawing.
Now, is that, is that standard, Mr. Clerk? No, I ask that question legitimately.
To, to Mr. Mayor, yes. Not that clerks across Ontario are particularly happy with it, but, yes, it is a standard process.
Okay, council, do we have any more questions? Counselor Nero?
Just, just on that last point, Mr. Clerk, do councils have the authority to change that last part?
The hat?
We would, I'm not sure what you are suggesting, suggesting, Counselor Nero.
Maybe a, maybe a second vote? Do we go to a second ballot instead of drawing from a hat? I, I just, if it's in there, from the municipal act, we have no choice, but I really.
Drawing from a hat is not in municipal act. I could, I could tell you that much.
So, could we, could we have a second ballot just to ensure that the vote is 6-6? Someone may change their mind in a second.
Well, two people, two people may change their mind the other way, and then you'd have a, you'd have a tie valid again. So what do you do in that circumstance?
Well, I don't know. I'm just throwing this out here right now. I don't want to just open this up and debate it all night, but I just, if there was a way that council thought that we could get away from this drawing out of a hat, I, I, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, I think you'll be uncomfortable in the circumstance, no matter what.
I'm uncomfortable with the whole thing, but we have to do it. You know.
It's, I don't know that I've, I've heard of having subsequent votes.
Again, I don't want to stall the process.
You are having a simultaneous recorded vote on the matter, so you are indicating your thoughts and your decision on that in the first ballot.
I know. I just wanted to throw that out there, I guess.
I think we're, we're, kind of, we're stuck with the, with the process that we've used before, Counselor Nero, and as I understand it, this is the process municipalities used before. It's never ended in a tie. If it ends in a tie, we'll just have the, that, that circumstance we have to contend with. Mr. Clerk?
Hey, is there, are there any more questions regarding my report? Perhaps if we can have the vote on accepting it for information?
All in favor? Carried.
And we can now proceed to the nomination portion of the appointment process.
Do we have any nominations, councillors? Counselor Button?
I nominate Ozzy Grandinetti.
Any other councillor, any other nominations councillors? Counselor Bruni?
I nominate Luca Robaberro.
Counselor Fata, you had your hand up?
I'll nominate Luke Dufour.
Counselor Christian, you had your hand up?
Mike Jalak.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Um, Mr. Wade?
Okay. Any other nominations, council? That's five nominations, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Last call for nominations. Nominations are closed.
I'd just like to confirm that with council. We have nominated Mr. Grandinetti, Mr. Robaberro, Mr. Dufour, Mr. Jalak, and Mr. Wade. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers?
Yeah, just one second, I want to go over the names again. So we have Mr. Grandinetti.
Mr. Robaberro.
Mr. Robaberro.
Mr. Dufour.
Mr. Dufour.
Mr. Jalak.
Mr. Jalak.
And Mr. Wade.
Mr. Wade. Counselor Myers?
My question is, do we do this the same then as we do with our boards and committees appointments that we, well, you're about to tell us that, right? We're gonna write down a name, and then you will read those names and what councillor put what name?
That's correct, so.
You have to write down your name and the person you're voting for's name.
I would ask council that you please print both your name and the name of the person you are voting for. The deputy clerk will pick up your ballots when ready.
He's got it.
The results of the first round of voting are as follows. Counselor Button votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Myers votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Bruni votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Nero votes for Mr. Dufour. Counselor Shoemaker votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Hollingsworth votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Hoopanen votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Compaugh votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Christian votes for Mr. Jalak. Counselor Fata votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Turco votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Mayor Provenzano votes for Mr. Dufour. The vote results are Mr. Grandinetti, six, Mr. Robaberro, three, Mr. Dufour, two, Mr. Jalak, one, Mr. Wade, zero. Then proceed, as there's no majority yet, to a second round of voting. Mr. Wa- Mr. Wade will fall off the list. You are therefore have a grouping of Mr. Grandinetti, Mr. Robaberro, Mr. Dufour, and Mr. Jalak. You would again indicate your name and the vote of one, or the name of one person you're voting for. Results of this round of voting. Counselor Turco votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Fata votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Christian votes for Mr. Jalak. Counselor Compaugh votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Hoopanen votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Hollingsworth votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Shoemaker votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Nero votes for Mr. Dufour. Counselor Bruni votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Button votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Myers votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Mayor Provenzano votes for Mr. Robaberro. The results of this round of voting. Mr. Grandinetti, six, Mr. Robaberro, four, Mr. Dufour, one, Mr. Jalak, one. We require at least one more round of voting for this round. The two candidates remaining will be Mr. Grandinetti and Mr. Robaberro. Mr. Dufour and Mr. Jalak drop off the ballot. Results of this round of voting are as follows. Counselor Button votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Myers votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Bruni votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Nero votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Shoemaker votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Hollingsworth votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Hoopanen votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Counselor Compaugh votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Christian votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Fata votes for Mr. Robaberro. Counselor Turco votes for Mr. Grandinetti. Mayor Provenzano votes for Mr. Robaberro.
6-6.
Council, I'm just going to show these two pieces of paper to the CAO for him to confirm that the name of each candidate is one on each paper. I will be folding each piece of paper once, placing them into the jar. I'll ask the CAO to shake the jar, and I will pull my name. Council, I'll now pick the name. Council, the name is Mr. Grandinetti. I would therefore have a motion, council, by councillors Compaugh and Christian, resolved that this council now appoint Mr. Osvaldo Grandinetti to the position of councillor, Ward six, for the balance of the 2015 to 2018 term of council.
All in favor? Carried.
Council, we can now move to the consent agenda.
Okay, council, we're on consent. Any matters of consent, council? Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item 6.7.
Okay, go ahead.
A couple of questions for Ms. McLeod on this report. Ms. McLeod, we, we spoke earlier today, and I just wanted to get a couple of questions out to council in reference to the survey options. As far as the resolution is concerned, it asks for ways to survey the parks to see what the best usage is. And I, I think it's a good report, and I think it's, it's workable with option one, with one exception. I think that it would work in terms of staff looking for changes in usages or present usages in our existing parks. But would we not, do you believe, need an actual survey if staff recommended a change in the usage of the park or a segment of the park?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. The idea behind it was initially to take a look at the data that's there. We've got several reports overlay that. And then if we are moving forward with looking at a change in a park, then we take that individual park and do more of a detailed analysis by looking at usage statistics for that particular park.
Okay, so would, are you saying then that if you thought that a usage in a park would change, would we actually go out there and say hire students to do the survey on that particular park?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. Yes, we'd take a much closer look at that park to get more data on the usage statistics and how that park's being used if we're proposing a change to the park or a portion of the park.
And is that being done today? If we're looking at a change in usage, do we actually go out there and survey that park for that particular use?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. Moving forward, that would definitely be our intent. So if we are looking at doing a change to an upcoming park, we would go out and get more data before we bring a recommendation back to City Council.
And more data would mean not just using a census where a census, or even a recent census, would tell us the demographics of that neighborhood, would tell us how many children are in that neighborhood, but it actually wouldn't tell us if those children are going out to use the facilities in that park. It would tell us that they live in the neighborhood, but we don't know if those children are going out there to play tennis, to play ball, use the playground equipment, or if they're at home playing on their iPad. So a census tells us the kids are there, but it doesn't tell us the usage on the park. Right? Would you agree?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. That would be correct. So to give us a basis for looking at if we're going to make changes. But if we are going to look at making changes, it would be in the best interest to make sure that we do have usage statistic to present to council to support any changes that might be taking place.
Okay, one final question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I don't want to mix two issues here, but we have an upcoming decision to make on Wilcox Park on the use of the tennis courts. If we approve this tonight, would you have staff go out there and do an actual physical usage survey on that tennis court?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. Yes, our intent would be to collect more data so that when we did bring that report back to council, that you'd have the demographic data as well as some usage statistics in order to make a decision.
Okay, and just one final question then. If we go that way and we approve this, you go out there and do the survey, a fiscal survey on that particular usage at that park, would that move the date of that hearing for that agenda item?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. Potentially, we're hoping that we would be able to get the survey done, but it could potentially move the report to an August date.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. McLeod.
Thank you. On the same matter, we have Counsel Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report comes out of a motion that Counselor Butland, I think, and I brought. And I was just rereading the motion, and it asked for a report, or sorry, request from staff, a survey on the usage of parks. So I appreciate that they've brought back a report, but I'm not sure that was exactly the request that we had made. I will, however, say that it's a good report, very thorough. And I'm wondering, so the general outcome of it, I guess, is that it would cost too much to do a survey of all of our parks at this time. But I'm wondering if it's known, within our current staff contingency and physical asset contingency, including vehicles and all these other things that you noted we might need to actually survey parks' usage, how many could we do this year, for example, if we worked with our existing workforce? Or not this year, but maybe, you know, if we started and planned it for next year? How many could we do within our capacity without having to hire more people?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. I think it'd be, I wouldn't be able to put a number to it. Our resources are fairly tight right now, which would mean that we'd have to pull students off of other jobs or other locations in order to achieve it. And the reason that we didn't kind of do it moving forward is we didn't have it kind of in the budget to do it. But I think the approach would be to really take a look at overlaying all of that demographic data along with the Innovation Center report as well as our aging of our equipment, identify which parks we think we need to take a closer look at. So if we looked at a park and we felt that maybe the equipment needed to be upgraded, then we'd want to know how many kids are actually using that park before we invested the money into the infrastructure there. On the other side of that, you know, if we have a park that's really dated and the demographics are kind of showing that's an older population, maybe it could be a passive park in that instance. And again, we need to understand the usage. So I think if we're doing a few parks each year based off of what we think that change in use may be, then we would look at trying to see how we can fit that in our existing complement based off of kind of what that data's telling us and what the age of the equipment is, as well as in partnership with our Parks Department and what they're seeing in each of those locations.
Yeah, I think that makes some sense. It just concerns me a little bit if we're doing a few parks each year. That, you know, we have seven parks. A few parks each year will take us, you know, somewhere in the range of 37 years to get through all our parks. So I don't know if there's a way that we can get six or eight or 10 parks each year so that we know, within a more reasonable period of time, what the usage is. And, you know, perhaps we could start by surveying those that our Innovation Center and, you know, various other agencies think are in need of survey or where there's a potential change in use forecasted. That would be my request. I don't know if that's something that's doable within, you know, the framework or if that needs to be a separate motion all on its own.
That strikes me, and I'll defer to staff, but that strikes me as a separate motion unless Virginia's saying that that's doable within this framework.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. If we were going to be looking at doing, say, even a portion of the parks each year, it would require addition to the existing budget. So we'd have to submit an increase to the budget in order to accommodate the students, as well as look at the vehicles that would be required in order for the students to participate, so to go to those locations. So again, it would just be a budget increase request.
I disagree. I think if counsel says that it's a priority to do this, it has to just be worked within the existing budget. So I'll think about it, and I'll determine what the best way forward is on that.
Okay. Counselor Hollingsworth, you are also on six point seven.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mayor, to Ms. Virginia McLeod. So let me help me understand. What is the real intent of collecting this data? The title of this report is Park Usage Survey Options. So what are we actually going to do with this data?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth. It was entitled Park Usage Survey Options. Originally, we were requested to actually come back with statistics. However, we weren't able to fit that within the budget. So these were options moving forward into a following year, you know, depending on which option you selected to get the statistics. At this point, our way that we'd like to move forward is to actually look at that data first to see what might be required in each of those areas before we invest the money into surveying all of the parks at once and survey the parks that we feel we might look at doing a change of use in and just focus on those ones as we move forward as opposed to doing all 54 of the parks at the same time. And as you note in the report, I did pull out certain sites out of the report because we do collect statistics through our user groups that are using each of those sites. So we do have some data and statistics related to places like Strafford Sports Complex, Queenie, and all of those other locations.
Okay, thank you. A few other questions. You mentioned in one of the report, playground gaps. Can you define playground gaps?
Sorry, which section were you referring to?
Under option one, I think, on your report, you refer to playground gaps. So I'm assuming that your meaning when you say playground gaps, maybe one playground may not have playground equipment, and a gap in another park could be...
Oh, sorry, through you, Counselor, I'm sorry, Mayor Provenzano to Counsel Hollingsworth. That was, that came out of the Innovation Center's report. So those were criteria that they used when they were evaluating the parks. So in that report, they looked at walking distance and then gaps in the types of play equipment or services that were provided in a particular area when they evaluated each of those parks.
Okay, and another question. Is it fair to say that if we hypothetically, the long-term goal would be have all our parks, granted, there's Stratford, you're unique parks, but most neighborhood parks to be consistent in playground equipment? To have a slide, to have the swings, to have basically similar?
Through you, Mayor Provenzano to Counsel Hollingsworth. The goal would be to really take a look at what types of playground or equipment are provided in each of those parks. And then again, if we feel that a park needs to be upgraded based on the age of the equipment and the types of equipment that may be in there, we would take a much closer look at that particular park to see if that's indeed being utilized or if we should look at refurbishing another area first. So again, ideally, you know, we do have aging infrastructure, and we need to take a look at that moving forward.
Three other questions. Another question. Has a park ever been closed recently? Let's say in the last five years, six years? Has a park ever been closed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth. I don't believe, not that I'm, I don't believe that we have closed any parks.
Okay, I just want, may I make a comment at this time on this subject?
Sure.
Ironically, I did receive two phone calls from constituents in my ward, and they wanted to emphasize that they are grandparents. They're young grandparents. They're only in their late 60s, but they take care of their grandchildren. Grandchildren actually go to the park because it's a nice, free, fun activity. So you mentioned about demographics. Be cautious that you don't just focus on young age because even the older age are now seeing grandparents taking care of their grandchildren. And hence, please do not jump to conclusions until we understand demographics. Second thing, I could be wrong, but option one and option two, I do not see any feedback from an open house, from a student-parent committee, or even local surrounding schools. So you, I know, Ms. McLeod and our staff are excellent at gaining information from open houses. I hope that as we move forward in pulling more data together, that we do open houses. Do you see that as a possibility?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth. That would be part of the process as we collect more data. So if we are changing use of a particular area, we do hold an open house. So that would be a sample of Wilcox Park. We did hold an open house to gain feedback from community members about the potential change in use that we were looking at there. So we would ensure that we would make sure we engage the community members in the neighborhood.
Okay, and hopefully, these happen during the school year and not during the summer. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so on that same matter, Counsel Butland?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it was my resolution. And what prompted the resolution? I appreciate the report. I think it's going to be useful information as it comes forward. What prompted it was in my circuitous rides throughout the city last summer. I haven't been doing it this summer yet, but passing neighborhood park after neighborhood park, not seeing a soul, be it grandparent or middle-aged or young people or anybody in the park. It's a beautiful green space. And I guess you could call it a park, but not all parks should have slides and swings because there's nobody there using them. This is not a criticism of all the parks across the city. But if, in fact, the survey shows they're not being used and they're just going to be a green space, well, so be it. So don't expend a lot of monies on playground equipment that nobody's going to use. And certainly, any indication to close a park or green space, obviously, you're going to have neighborhood input. And I assure you will all say, absolutely no way you can close this spot. But that remains to be seen what the survey shows. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in six point seven? You, Counsel, Myers, six point seven, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see Travis Reed up in our gallery and Susan Hamilton Beach, our Director of Public Works, of course. And I guess that because this came up recently in Ward Two about grass cutting in some of our parks, because we've had a weird start this year and the grass has grown incredibly. I think somehow or other we've got to bring this cost into this whole scenario. When we're looking at the equipment and capital costs, that's one thing. But it's the ongoing operating and maintenance of our parks. And I guess that somehow or other, I'd like to find a way that we can acknowledge some sort of a correlation between our costs of maintaining our parks, keeping the grass clean and the equipment in good order where there is equipment and so on. So building a little further on what Counsel Butland said, if there's parks where we see that a passive park, where you can just go for a nice walk or sit, you know, in a nice area, you know, in a grassy, greense space, that's great. There's park benches that might be a little low maintenance cost versus having a bunch of play equipment if it doesn't, you know, reach people. I think of the repurposing of Penn Horwood Park just last week with the golf disc now as a new recreational piece. So I think that this has to be a very broad sort of keeping in mind as we go forward and bring back this information about parks, period. And I think Travis would be very happy if we could include the fact that we recognize there's quite a cost to maintaining our parks as well as we do, and we appreciate it. And Mr. Mayor, I got to take a moment, and you're going to grant me, I know, a wee bit of leeway, that we've got to thank Travis and the Parks Department for the outstanding gardens that they are doing for Canada 150. The one at the foot of Pym Hill just went in this last week. There's a very special garden going in over at Reverta Bonder Park that's partly in. And then the Library's Centennial Garden that's going at the North Civic Center. And this is outstanding work. And I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank him because we won't be together again until July.
Thank you, Travis. And to your team. Anybody else in six point seven? On six point seven? Go ahead.
Comments, I guess. I've had, over the years, I've had numerous people, like from their own wards, pointing that out to me that that park over there, I drive by it every day, and there's never anybody there. It seems like, and of course, the response or the follow-through on that is, well, why don't you guys maybe think about closing it down and maybe have it developed? And that certainly is an easy answer to say. But is conceivably, is that something that we can look forward to in terms of moving forward? Is that some of these areas that are underutilized, that we would look at the option to sell those properties and perhaps develop them? I'm not sure who would answer that.
I'm not sure who would answer that, too. I'm going to give it to the CAO and have him take a run at it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Fata. The, again, we do look at all development opportunities, but these are parks that have been identifying the 54 are part of the inventory that we've had. We certainly would need to have the data to be able to look at the usage rates. We also need to be considerate of green spaces in the municipality. We need to be considerate of other issues of entities and quality of life within the community. So I can't say that there would be a definitive use of the, if that park was underutilized, immediate consideration of it being set up for development might be set up for other, for other needs instead.
Just as a follow-up on that one. Now, a couple of years ago, a piece of property was donated by the family to create a park. Now, I guess my question is, if we were to look at this particular park and we would say, well, we're going to discontinue it for lack of use, I guess that could pose problems, obviously, because that was a donation to the city.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Fata. That is correct.
Yeah, and then we've also, we've also touched, we've also dealt with the matter. In the past, we've dealt with the matter of Porton Sheen Park, that the issue was raised as to whether we would develop a portion of that because of underutilization. But again, that's something that we would have to look at through this study, I suppose, eh?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. And then the case of Pointe de Sheen And then the case of Pointe de Chene, that has been looked at previously, but it would have to be done through that review.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else in 6.7? So, we started the consent agenda with Councillor Nero, are you down, Councillor Nero, on the consent agenda?
Uh, yeah, I am.
Next on my list is Councillor Bruni.
Regarding Agenda Item 6.4, the RFP consultation, has there any, has there been consultation with fire services to the CAO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Bruni, yes, there has been. And there has also been an indication, as provided in previous reports to council, to the association, to make them aware of what the process is and taking through, and they've had an input on the, as an association, on the terms of reference that were set out as part of the RFP document that has now been returned with the two bids that were brought to us, of which the one bid from Dylan is being recommended.
And I think, I think you have to clarify, so they had consultation on the terms that went out.
Yes, the terms that went out, yeah.
The selection committee was, I think you should identify for council who the selection committee was, so they have all of the information.
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Bruni, the selection committee included the acting chief, the deputy chief, the CAO, the risk manager for legal department, and the manager for purchasing.
And what's the timeline for this to be completed and presented back to council?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Bruni, we're looking at being aggressive, we're hoping to be back by September in front of council.
Okay. That's the second meeting in September?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is our hope, but it's, in terms of the actual terms, it might be later, because this is a very aggressive one, but for all the reasons surrounding it, we need, we're trying to do.
I'm very glad, because this has been lingering on for months, it seems years, but I'm very happy, and I'm happy that you said there was consultation with fire services, but I noticed just the deputy chief, the deputy, the chief and the deputy, the acting chief and the deputy were involved in it, nobody else from fire services, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Bruni, that is correct, but again, the RFP was set up with the input of the association, in terms of the terms of reference, and as per the procurement process that's undertaken by the city, all that the committee is doing is just confirming that they're meeting the criteria of the RFP process. They're not, they're not making a decision.
Who best meets the criteria of the RFP?
Yeah, thank you very much.
So, on that same matter, we have Councillor Hollingsworth.
Through you, Mayor, to CAO, just for clarification, did we receive the Fire Marshal's report yet?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Hollingsworth, we have not received a report from the Ontario Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Office. We had expected that would be in early March, have not received it. But again, that's not a comprehensive risk assessment, that was a review that's being conducted under Section 9 of the, of the Fire Protection Act.
That, that report will be received by council, it's for council, so if, when we have it, you have it.
I thought, since we're talking about fire, just curious.
It's not here yet. Councillor Butland, were you on the same topic?
Yes, and I'm glad Councillor Hollingsworth brought it up, because on December the 7th, we don't know what prompted it, we thought it was a political thing, and we know, well, a lot of things have happened since December the 7th, but we received notification, the Fire Marshal has the power to monitor, review, and advise municipalities respecting the provision of fire protection services, and to make recommendations to municipal councils for improving the efficiency and effectiveness of those services. Now, that reads to me like a risk assessment, but they tell me, no, it's not a risk assessment. So, you'll recall, I, well, you may not recall, but I called in March and they said, in two weeks, you should have the report before you, and now we're three months after that date, and I called again, and they said it's up for its second or third rewrite as to what's coming forward. And they said, we understand there's been a whole lot of changes in Sault Ste. Marie in the past several months, and we recognize them as positive, and I think we also do as, as well. So, 16 people converged, 16 individuals from the Fire Marshal's office, where they seconded, seconded came into Sault Ste. Marie and prepared a report that's taking seven months to produce. And I was going to say, well, before we proceed with the risk assessment, let's see what the Fire Marshal's office is going to come down. It was suggested to me that the Fire Marshal's report will probably say you should have a risk assessment, so I'm prepared to support this. Thank you.
Councillor Fata?
See, Mr. CAO, what's the cost of this? I don't see any way, what's the cost of it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Fata, as indicated in the report, it's, $99,000 was the amount that was provided for the base services.
The cost is in the report, Councillor Fata.
Yeah, and I saw the 99,000, but I, but I thought there was some more funds coming from fire services, but.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Fata, the original report that came forward to ask us to be able to go out to do an RFP identified that up to $150,000 would be utilized from within, so the actual bids are significantly lower than what was originally estimated for the initiative.
Through this process, Mr. CAO, through, through the mayor, is, is the timing of this assessment, do you think, appropriate now versus six months from now, you know, it was some other point in time? Is, is the, is the timing of it, as far as you're concerned, appropriate?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Fata, that has been an issue and a discussion point for quite some time throughout this whole process. As part of the discussions with the association, as part of our intent to try and find and build better labor relations, we said we would be going forward on the, with an accelerated comprehensive risk assessment, and it has been now approved by council for a go-forward, and this is the report that's coming back to saying, here's the vendor that was selected as part of that approved process.
And Councillor Fata, one of the things we have to be cognizant of is that we're, we're experiencing retirements right now in fire service. So, you know, the, the number of suppression officers is decreasing, and we really want this information before that number decreases too, too far, right? So, we want to make sure we have the right number suppression officers, so, you know, we move this up for, for that reason. We, we had a discussion on the timing when we authorized that the administration would go out and look at doing this. And council approved at that point to do it earlier than we had originally intended.
I'm gathering from what you're saying, Mr. CAO, that the pressures that are coming to, to create harmony within the organization is playing a role in the timing of this, of this assessment?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Fata, that, that's certainly part of it, but as the mayor has pointed out, we're also looking at where we're getting to the, the final number that was originally approved as part of the plan, going from 88 to 68. And so, we need to know sooner rather than later whether the, we get to that level, because we have retirements where we're going to get to that level, and we still won't have an answer. And with given the pause, we won't be able to hire back those individuals, so we want to know sooner rather than later to make sure that we have the right number in terms of firefighters, and that we then can proceed going forward in a way that everybody can be comfortable with, given the outcomes from the comprehensive risk assessment.
So, just in terms of scenario, if the assessment comes back and says we have to go back to the same compliment we had initially, right from, right from the start?
Councillor Fata, then we as a group will have a decision we have to make, and we'll have that data, along with the Fire Marshal's data, and by that point, a new fire chief to make that decision with. So, we're not going to discuss hypotheticals, but I imagine if we retain these folks to do a comprehensive risk assessment, and the data they bring back to us tells us we should be staffing at a certain level, I certainly would find that persuasive, but why would we get into that discussion tonight when we don't have any of this data?
Okay. Just one, maybe one final point, Mr. Mayor. Is the fact that we've had, we have a history right now in these last, you know, let's say, 18 months, we've had, we have a history of what, how fire services has functioned to this point. We've seen, we've seen our, our changes that we, that we proposed in action. Will that play a role, do you think? Should it play, I believe it should play a role, but the fact that we have a history in Sault Ste. Marie of what is required for fire services?
This party, this independent party is very experienced with doing this. The CAO can, they're very experienced, and so I'm sure they're going to take all those things into consideration, but they're going to give us like independent, third-party, objective advice, and they, they know how to do this, they have a history of doing it, and you'll get that data from them.
I'm just concerned, Mr. Mayor, that if we act on these, this assessment, and it says, go back to the way things were as far as fire services, we're looking at something in the order of about million dollars.
Councillor Fata, wait for the assessment.
I know, I understand, I understand.
We're not talking about anything that is actually a reality right now. Like, wait for the data and the information, and we'll have that debate and discussion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we're doing this because we, we got pressures from the union of the firefighters. We're doing it in a.
Councillor Fata, look, we've had this debate, there's two things here. We recognize and acknowledge, and the CEO has, that we're trying to improve better relations, and they asked us to do it sooner rather than later, and we decided we would do it sooner rather than later. But from the beginning of this project, we always said that we would have to do a comprehensive risk assessment, and it was, we had 88 suppression officers, and we were going to decrease to a maximum, not fully, but to a maximum of 20. The reality is, we are getting to that number, and if we don't have the right number, we need to know sooner rather than later. So, we're going to go and get that data, and we will make a decision. And my feeling is, if at the time we get the data, we only have, we have 72 firefighters, and the data verifies that that's enough, that's enough. If the data verifies that that isn't enough, then I would certainly support hiring more firefighters. But like, we don't know what the data's going to say, and I don't see any sense in debating hypotheticals about what the data might say tonight. We just need to authorize staff to go out and get the data, then hopefully, we'll make good decisions based on that data.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else on that matter? Seeing none, am I at Councillor Bruni, I'm still with you?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Agenda Item 6.19, the concrete curb and sidewalk program. Who do I direct this to? Thank you. Susan?
Ms. Hamilton Beach will.
Ms. Hamilton Beach will handle the question?
Yeah.
Thank you. I know I brought this up last year with Mr. Girardi. Are we working more efficiently and effectively with these concrete curbs and sidewalks in the sense that, giving an example, you might have three or four curbs to repair in a, in a block, but if you drive around, you notice part of it started, the other one has maybe cement poured, the other two are completely empty, dug out. Are we working, do we have a procedure in place that we're working more effectively and efficiently that hopefully would save us a little bit of money, I guess, with?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Bruni, yes, I would like to think we're working as efficient as possible. We have two different efforts that are always undergoing. Our program this year is moving from east to west, and that is definitely a planned effort. What sometimes happens is we have lateral repairs that will require sidewalk or concrete curb work, and that sometimes ends up causing our, our effort and our forces to go back into an area and be working at different stages. But definitely the planned program, we are trying to work as efficiently as possible.
Okay. And now, we budgeted 447,000. Are we, can council still call to add on any sidewalks if it happens to be a tripping hazard or hazard to the walkers?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Bruni, this year's program is set. By all means, as, as you all are aware, we have a work order system that will track hazards such as that and prioritize it as is needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on that topic? Okay. Is that all you have, Councillor Bruni?
That's all.
Councillor, Councillor, I have, I have a list here, Councillor Shoemaker, we have Councillor Butland next?
No, I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, it was something else. We have Councillor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Items 6.14 and 6.15, and I suspect these might be, I don't know, be directed towards, really, it's the Chief Financial Officer that I want to speak to about it. So, the surplus properties at 205 Greenfield, 33 Wilkes that are going to be sold, where do those proceeds go? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Shell.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Myers, the way the Property Purchase Reserve Fund is set up right now, any property sales go into that fund to be used for other approved property purchases required by the corporation.
Okay. And that's, I think, policy, correct?
That's a policy unless directed otherwise by council to change.
Okay. And in April, we directed otherwise in terms of supporting the downtown development initiative, I believe?
That is correct, and the fund right now is fully committed until the property sales are completed on the properties identified to fund that initiative.
Do we, can you give me a balance at the moment of what's there in our fund? Well, I'll ask two parts to that. What was, what's our commitment to the downtown development initiative fund? Was it 300,000?
The, the downtown development commitment was 600,000, and that's approximately how much was in that fund.
Okay. Wasn't that going to be 200,000 a year for three years?
Yes, it is, but until such time that that, the properties are sold for those, it's back, back funding those, that initiative.
Okay. So, are there other outstanding properties that have yet to been sold that are part of that commitment, other than these two that are on the agenda tonight?
The two that are on the agenda tonight are not included in that commitment, but I've identified the approximate funding that is going to be available from the list of properties that legal has identified as being declared surplus, and that includes those two properties that are on tonight's.
Okay. And that was 300,000, I think, in your?
No.
Okay. I guess I'm jumping to the splash pad report, you had mentioned something about 300,000 that's in.
Oh, sorry, actually, it wasn't in the report, it was removed. The range, my apologies.
That's okay.
The range was 50 to 100,000 for all property that was declared surplus, and that's based on assessed value and what we possibly could get for it in the market.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else on that report? Anybody else on that report? Go ahead, Councillor Myers.
Okay. I'm going to move along to an easier one. That would be the Walk of Fame, which is 6.6, Mr. Mayor, the Walk of Fame redesign. And I believe that our Director of Public Works is here to speak on this, and if there's any questions on that one tonight. Just for the benefit of council and our friends at home that I'm sure are glued to the TV still at this hour, the Walk of Fame desire to get it resurrected and back, back out in the public was shared by Councillor Shoemaker and Butland and myself, so three of us formed the committee that council graciously approved. So, we've been working very hard with staff. I believe the report is actually Rachel's report, and, and she said that she felt that, you know, certainly our Director of Public Works can answer any questions, because Mr. Girardi actually was part of our committee, too, as a resource. But we're most hopeful that we're going to be able to get this out of the gate later this year. We're, we're not committing a timeframe to it, but I did speak with, with Mr. Girardi and Ms. Hamilton Beach, and they're going to work very hard to try and get this so that we can make this a late-year Canada 150 project to get our 40 people back out in recognition in the community. So, I wanted to thank them and acknowledge the work that's been done. There's been a lot of work done by the Planning Department, particularly Tori Pouse has been most helpful to us as a resource as well. So, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to acknowledge that on the Walk of Fame.
On the Walk of Fame, Councillor Hollingsworth, go ahead.
I just wanted to say to Councillor Myers and Rachel and the whole team, their suggestions, I think, are very attractive and well-done in all the work. Just a quick question, why are there going to be display cases so close to each other at Hockey Arena down on Queen?
I can actually speak to that, Mr. Mayor. We, the attachment on the report here is, is, was an early-on rendition, that is not by any means the fait accompli. From a financial point of view, we're in a position where we feel we can do four cases for now, and that would give us a total of space for 48 recognitions, of which we only have 40 at the moment. So, that gives us some wiggle room to spread the recognitions out among those four cases, and the four cases will be spread out as well to actually create a walk. They won't be in the same block as is on this rendering. And then as we move forward, you know, we may look at other cases in years to come, far beyond my time, I'm sure, so. Good question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any, anybody else on that topic? Councillor Myers, anything else on the consent agenda?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. So, Councillor Shoemaker is next in the consent agenda.
6.5, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Through you to the Commissioner of Finance, or, I think, I always call her the Commissioner of Finance, I think.
Treasurer.
Actually, the treasurer, but. The, the gist of this report is that there's no money for the splash pad at this time, if I'm reading that correctly. Am I right? time, if I'm reading that correctly. Am I right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. Based on the previous reports and other reports that'll be coming to council at the next meeting, which talks to our constrained cash flow, I can't recommend that that project move ahead at this time.
I, I was reading this report in the context of the rest of the reports on the consent agenda and noted that in the rest of these reports, there is at various times ninety-seven hundred additional found for active transportation, a hundred thousand found for a risk assessment at Fire Services, forty-five thousand additional found for second-line culvert, twenty-seven thousand additional found for strathcler lighting, seventy thousand additional found for a pump station, and thirty-five hundred additional found for Walk of Fame. And the, the resolution that we put forward was to find all possible sources of city funds, that they be identified for the splash pad. So, I'm just wondering, all these other things that funds have been found for, and this five hundred thousand represents somewhere in the range of, I think, one two-hundredth of our total budget. So, I'm just wondering how it is that we can't find it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. All of the projects that you've mentioned were included either in the operating budget or the capital budget that were approved by council and prioritized by council. Some of the projects that came in already, there was some funding increases that were required, and other projects came in that came in under budget and we were able to rejig them. All the projects were priorities established by council and approved by council. Unfortunately, the splash pad was in the 2018 forecast and it wasn't prioritized for 2017 to, for, for us to fund. To go right now and try to find that money, we would have to reprioritize another capital project. We're halfway through the year. Most of these projects have already begun. It is in the twenty, the splash pad is in the 2018 budget. No funds have been identified, but as we do our capital prioritization for 2018, I think, based on staff and even council doing the prioritization, I would see a high likelihood that this would come through.
I guess I'd half disagree with you. I'll, I'll agree in the sense that we approved a prioritization of capital projects, but I think, you know, we certainly expressed our desire in passing the resolution that asked that, where is the exact wording here? That all funding possibilities be examined, or something along those lines. I would say that in and of itself was a prioritization by council of this project.
I think the distinction that the Treasurer's making is, we had prioritized all those other projects prior to this budget year. So, we're into the budget year, and we tell them into the budget year, find another half a million dollars, which is a lot more difficult than find another fifteen thousand dollars or find another twenty thousand dollars. So, I don't think you're entirely comparing apples to apples, Counsel Shoemaker. I think there's a distinction between this project and the other projects that we found some money for. In fairness to senior staff.
Yeah, I guess, I can see the logic behind that, but we approved a capital prioritization. Then the next meeting or a couple of meetings later, we canceled one of the major projects in there. So, we're rejigging this prioritization at every turn, and, and council has identified this as a priority, I would say, through its wording, and I just feel like it's not being treated as a priority. So, that's, those are perhaps comments more than questions. I had my questions answered, but I, you know, I would, I would, I would say that council's already expressed that this is a priority, so I would urge staff to really consider all funding envelopes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. If council chooses to reprioritize any of the projects that have already been prioritized, they may do so, but staff has looked at every available pocket of money that is uncommitted at this time. I can't sit there and say, I recommend that you cancel this project or that project. That's not something that is within my ability to do.
Right. And I'm simply saying that we already did that. We've canceled projects. We've added projects. So, at various times throughout the year, after the budget's already approved, we've reprioritized. So, I'm suggesting that this was a high priority and should be viewed as such by city staff.
Thank you. Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for.
Mrs. McCleod. On the splash pad?
Yes. And I don't want anybody to read any more into this question than what it is. It's a question. Ms. McCleod, this, we approved this coming in at five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Refresh my memory, where does that fit in the whole scope of costs of splash pads? Where are we? Are we at a premium cost splash pad? Are we in the middle, or that just gets us a splash pad and we can go up from there? Where are we?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. There are some pricing things that we do need to establish. So, one of the things the committee is looking at is what the cost of the building would be and how that building could be scaled to bring the cost down. The splash pad itself range anywhere from two, two hundred and fifty thousand up to four hundred, and then on top of that, you have to bring in services to the site. There's lighting. There's all the infrastructure that's built around it. So, the splash pad alone generally start at a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand and go up, and that would be a small splash pad with a certain number of features. So, we were looking at something a little bit larger. So, you know, depending on the fundraising, the cost of that splash pad could be brought down a bit, but there are a number of factors that have to be considered as we start to look more at the design of it.
So, so it's not the splash pad itself that's getting to this price? It's the amenities that we have to have or the services we have to have to, to get this thing built?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. That is correct. There's a number of pieces. So, there's a splash pad itself, how we treat the water. We have to have mechanical room and ideally washrooms that support the facility. We have to bring the services in to the site as far as water, electrical, and water to waste, as well as, you know, how you finish treating the area around with, you know, whether there's benches or picnic tables or the pathways that lead to that particular splash pad area.
Okay. One final question. I don't know if you're able to answer this for the committee, but the splash pad committee. Are you, is there any contemplation to we look at the cost of this, seeing that we have this report in front of us tonight, that possibly it looks like this year we wouldn't be able to fund it unless council directs to just pull it from somewhere else? But other than that, are we going backwards at all that the committee might look at another way to do this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. The committee is looking at trying to reduce the cost of the building and the footprint of the building to bring the cost down. There are definitely some costs that are hard costs as far as bringing services in, and there will have to be some landscaping. They're also, we're also exploring other fundraising opportunities as well. So, there's a number of things that the committee are looking at to try to reduce the cost as well as look at funding avenues.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On the splash pad, Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to speak the timeline for a moment because I think I'm the one who's been really pressing hard on this since last August and trying to really press it as a Canada one-fifty legacy project because I felt that had we got some aggressive fundraising campaign out the door, that it would have given us a real good handle. But I think that the Chair of the Committee, Counsel Christian, and myself as the Canada one-fifty Chair on this piece of it, you know, that's our ideal. That has been our goal. I said it when we dealt with this at the May meeting with the resolution, that the time is ticking. So, if it's a Canada one-fifty-one groundbreaking next year, I don't think our committee has bent out of shape over that, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure. But I believe that there's been some things raised this evening that are already matters of subject of the committee and that, you know, certainly, I don't speak for Counsel Christian. He can quite obviously speak for himself, but as Chair, he's, he's undertaking a number of issues parallel that are part of what's been discussed this evening, and I think that obviously we'll likely be back with an updated report at some point in the not-too-terribly-distant future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Hoopinon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I believe it would be to Michelle, and I apologize if this has been answered already, but I'm still not clear. In the reserves, it says that we have a subdivider reserve fund that's approximately three hundred thousand dollars, insufficient to fund the entire project. So, in other words, is that there if we wanted to use it? It is. It is. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopinon. Yes, based on the project costs estimated to date of five seventy-five, though it's insufficient.
Yes.
But it is available.
Okay, good. Now, having said that, I see that another report on the agenda tonight, there's some surplus property that's for sale on Greenfield. Could we somehow use the funds if and when that is sold to offset the difference? Would that be in the realm of this council's authority to do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopinon. It has been done in the past. As was said, we did it with the downtown reserve fund. We allocated three properties that were going to be sold to fund that, the downtown initiative. It's up to council if they want to override the policy, which states that it does go to the property reserve fund. They have the discretion to do that.
Okay, so, in other words, if we decided to do that, there would be enough to get the splash pad off the ground this year?
I wouldn't say get it off the ground. The properties that are, all of the properties that have been declared surplus, and there's about ten or twelve of them, I'm estimating in the range of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars that might come from them. It depends on if they could even be sold. Some of them aren't the most marketable properties.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shell.
Yeah, it's no problem. I was just, I have Counsel Christian on the list. If he's happy to let me go to you first, then I will.
Counsel Christian?
There you go.
Very surprised you trying to be very polite to us. Anyways, I just have to make a comment. I mean, if, if this is identified for 2018, we don't have the funds right now, and I hear talk about can we reduce it, make it smaller. Let's wait for 2018. Let's build a proper splash pad and not, let's not be Mickey Mouse here because it seems like whenever we do something, we always try to do it on the cheapest end possible. That always comes back and haunts us. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
So, Counsel Christian, we're going to end with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think as far as the committee goes, I think in fairness, the report has just come out. It's a good news, bad news thing. The fact that we don't have, as the, as Shelley's pointed out, we don't have funds available. However, we do have the subdividers reserve fund. I think it's fair for the, to say that the committee should have a look at this. One thing that's not included in here is the fact that if we do identify some money, there are grants available that will essentially bring our cost of the, of the park down. So, to simply look at this and say, you know, we don't have money in the capital budget and can't do this. Fact is, we have three hundred thousand dollars. And we do have, I think we have some flexibility in terms of what we want to create. One of the things we didn't talk about and we need to consider is the type of infrastructure we put in place. Do we use a recycling system? Do we treat the water? So, there's options that we still need to look at. I don't think it's black and white yet. So, all I'm suggesting is, give the committee some time to continue to investigate, look at our funding options, knowing that there is three hundred thousand should we decide to go that road as a council. So, and, and that there is grant money out there as well. So, I don't think, you know, it's not a positive thing. It's not a negative thing. This thing is still evolving. So, I think we need to give our committee a little bit more time to digest this and hopefully come back with some good information in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Counsel Christian. Counsel Fatah, I guess we're ending with you.
I'm just going to ask you, Mr. Mayor, for a little bit of flexibility here. We keep talking about funding and the lack of it. Well, my, my notice of motion makes reference to an amount equal to about fifty percent of the total cost, and that's not part of this conversation.
We're going to get to your notice of motion when we get to your notice of motion, Counsel.
So, we're going to discuss it separately, even though there's.
We don't discuss notice of motions when they're read. They're just read.
I know. But I'm just saying that in this, on this topic that we're discussing right now, we don't have all the information. We're not discussing all the relevant information.
We are. Based on the decisions councils have made to date, we're discussing all the relevant information.
Well, the intent of this item here is that, is that we postpone it. In fact, we may not have to postpone it if we go in a different direction. So, okay, that's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
After all this.
We're going to move on from this item now. I'd like to thank the committee for all their work. I understand staff's position. I also, this is a project I'm confident we're going to get done. We're going to get there. We're going to build this. I'm a hundred percent with Counsel Bruny. Let's, if we're going to build it, let's build it right. Let's not downsize it or make it smaller. Let's build it right. Let's make a great asset for the kids in our community to use. And we've got a year and a half left, so we've got plenty of time. I don't see the, the urgency or the need to rush this. The committee can go away. They can do more of their good work. And in the meantime, staff will, in this building, will look at how we could fund this, and we'll come up with something and we'll build a great splash pad in 2018 for our community. I'm still with Counsel Shoemaker on the consent agenda. Counsel Shoemaker. Counsel Bruny, can I have you to take the chair for a second, just so I can take a brief break? I don't have anybody beyond him.
Counsel Shoemaker, quick.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Six point one-seven, the trees on municipal property report. Through you, I think it's to, yes, Ms. Hamilton Beach. Actually, I probably have, it's a good report. I think it makes a lot of sense that, that, and lays out that it would cost a significant amount more than what we're currently allotting to plant twice the number of trees as we're taking out. But I do think it is important to look to hit that one-to-one ratio at the very least. So, there's not actually a question to you, but there is one to the clerk. The recommendation here is that it be received as information and that the target of one planting, the target of one planting for every one removal of a park tree be considered by Public Works Forestry Division. I'm wondering if we change that word, not from be considered, but that it be strived for, does that have to come off the consent agenda, or can we make a friendly amendment to that?
Could you just repeat that, Counsel Shoemaker? Counsel Bruny was having a technical issue with the computer here. Sorry about that.
The recommendation is that one planting for every tree, for every one removal of a park tree be considered by Public Works. I'm wondering if, I'd like to change that to that it be strived for, so that it's more than just be considered, that they actually look to plant one tree for every one removed. So, I'm wondering if that has to come off consent for that to happen.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. Maybe I'll just ask Ms. Hamilton Beach if that's something she would have, or would consider as far as that being a recommendation from staff.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to the clerk. I, we're in agreement with that friendly amendment.
Okay. As long as council's fine with that, it can stay on the consent agenda and I'll make the adjustment to the wording.
Okay. That was it on that one.
Is that it? Anything else from Counsel Hollingsworth?
Which one?
Just the consent agenda.
Yes.
Six point one-two.
Yes.
Second line, Great Northern Active Transportation Day. Just a quick question. I guess I'll direct this towards, I guess, Dan. Through you, Acting Mayor. Dawn, sorry. When, what do you mean not to revisit the cycling master plan at this time? When are we going to revisit the, the master cycling plan?
Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, I spoke with Plank Director McConnell about this, and he didn't feel that, given the fact that this is just a study for one small area of the city, he recommended that we not revisit the cycling master plan. And because there's a consultant that you've already hired, that we've already hired to do a traffic study exactly along this L-shaped corridor, we thought it was an easy add-on for that project. We thought it's the best and probably the fastest way to get the active transportation question answered.
Okay. Perfect. I agree. So, just out of curiosity, does anyone know when the master plan's going to be revisited for cycling?
Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, that might be something on the. Mr. Acting Mayor to Counselor Hollingsworth, that might be something on the planning department's radar. It's, I think it's dated 2007 or 2008. Typically, master plans, we look at them every 10, 12, 15 years or so. So it may be on their radar for the next few years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this agenda item? Any other counselors? Counselor Kompadich.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Bruni. This is on a different item.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. There's just a question through you, Acting Mayor, to Mr. Elliott, regarding item 611, and it's a relocation of funds, the second line west cross culvert repair. I guess my question is, if the consent agenda is all approved, when would that project like to start? And after it is started, hopefully it gets started, is there gonna be any concerns with any traffic congestion or any safety concerns that we should be aware of in that area?
Mr. Acting Mayor to Counselor Kompadich, this is a relining. They're just gonna slip line a new culvert inside the old one, so I don't believe the road's going to be disrupted to any great degree. It'll be narrowed a bit, maybe down to one lane sometimes because of construction traffic, but the intention is to not cut the road. So that's your first question. The second one was how, when do we get to it? It should be completed this year. We don't want to make it a priority.
In late fall, or any idea?
I picture this as a late summer, early fall project. I can give you more details if I talk to staff tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors on anything on the agenda? Counselor Fatah?
Mr. Acting Mayor, I just wanted to talk to Mr. Elliott there regarding 6.12. I'd like to, seems like we're studying this intersection to death here, and is, Mr. Elliott, is, I know that we talked about this before, but is the idea of a roundabout on that intersection totally unrealistic?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Fatah, roundabouts are probably something that you're gonna see in the city at some point in the future. They work very well. I don't know that, that's, that's the Trans-Canada Highway, it's a five-lane road. In my personal opinion, I don't believe that's the place to try a roundabout. I may be wrong.
And I think you mentioned, I think you mentioned to me at one time that we'd have to start purchasing additional land to make it realistically possible.
Mr. Acting Mayor to Counselor Fatah, yes, a double-lane roundabout on a right-of-way that size would be probably very difficult to, to fit in. This is essentially be treated as a, as environmental assessment, really. There'll be a public open house. All options are essentially on the table, and the traffic expert will make a recommendation based on all the input.
Just as a follow-up, Mr. Acting Mayor, when we, when we talked about the Sackville Extension, I think the number that was given to us was that it would take about 3,000 vehicles off that intersection. I think that was the figure that I think you may have given us.
Mr. Acting Mayor to Counselor Fatah, I'm not, I don't recall the exact number, but it would take some, some traffic off of Great Northern Road between second and third line, yes.
Of course, the fact that there's approximately 50,000 cars a day at that intersection, 3,000 doesn't sound like a heck of a lot.
It's, it is the busiest intersection in the city, most definitely.
Just seems like we've created a problem here at this intersection. Do most towns have this problem with one heavily-used intersection like this? I just don't see where we're gonna solve this problem, unless we get more cars taking third line towards Black Road.
Mr. Acting Mayor to Counselor Fatah, it is a very busy intersection. There are certainly intersections that are much busier. There's things that can be done. We have right turn lanes in two, for two approaches. We could have right turn lanes for the other two approaches. Council, or pardon me, consultants in the past in transportation master plans have recommended we protect property for double-left turn lanes, that would help. But that requires acquisition of property, and if there's an opportunity to buy a property, we will, but we're not actively seeking it for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fatah. Anybody else on any agenda items?
Mr. Acting Members, Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, therefore we have a motion by Counselors Kompadich and Butland, resolve that all the items listed under date 2017-0626. Agenda item six, consent agenda and the addendum be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried?
That brings us to section eight of the agenda, under 8.1, a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Hollingsworth. Whereas tax ratios are used to establish the municipal tax rates to be paid annually by multi-residential, commercial, and industrial-class properties, and whereas the legislated regulations governing the use of tax ratios and associated changes in tax payments from property owners are complex, and whereas it is desirable for council to have it as detailed an understanding as possible of how its decisions will impact local rate pairs in all property classes, now therefore be it resolved that the Finance and Tax Department staff be directed to set aside one meeting during the 2018 budget schedule to explain the following. Current tax policy and how it distributes the tax levy across property classes, provincial thresholds, ranges of fairness and levy restrictions, and how these affect the use of tax ratios for different classes, the financial impact of hypothetical changes to the tax ratios for commercial and industrial classes, and how such changes might affect the taxes levied from other property classes, and how capping and clawback regulations and policies affect the taxes owing for the individual properties when there are substantial shifts in assessment or tax rate changes within a class.
So council, I had put this together based on some of the discussions that we did have, and I think now that we're doing our budget process the way we are, and we're setting aside specific time, I think it's important that we also set aside time to discuss the consequence of the budget on the different tax classes, and, you know, spend some time discussing how the tax classes all relate to each other for our own benefit and our own decision-making, but also for the benefit and decision-making of the general public. And I think it would be just a beneficial part of our budgeting process this year, and based on some of the discussions we had, when the bylaws came back and what the ratios were and what the tax rates were, I thought it was just better to front-load it and have those discussions early in the process, so that when it comes back, everybody understands why it's coming back the way it is, and the fact that, you know, we'd already made those decisions. So if we want to have a substantive discussion about the consequences of our decision, we should roll it back and have the discussions in the midst of budget, not post-budget. So that was the spirit behind this motion, and I appreciate Counselor Shoemaker and Hollingsworth putting their, putting their names on it. Counselor Shoemaker, would you like to speak to it? Does the, no? All in favor? Carried.
Under agenda item 8.2, Peddler Licensing Bylaw, a motion by Counselors Nero and Shoemaker. Whereas on March 17, 2003, the Corporation of the City of Susie-Saint-Marie enacted a peddler bylaw to license, govern, and regulate peddlers operating within the city. And whereas over the past several years, there have been repeated complaints made by local businesses to the city, the Susie-Saint-Marie Police Service, and Algoa Public Health regarding the operations of an out-of-town peddler who frequents the city and sells a variety of foodstuffs from a truck without a license. And whereas the actions of this peddler have had a negative effect on local businesses and are potentially putting residents who consume the peddler's products at an elevated risk of obtaining foodborne illness, and whereas despite the actions of this peddler being well-known and informally advertised, the party is yet to be charged or otherwise sanctioned from breaching the peddler bylaw, now therefore be it resolved that the city legal department be directed to review the peddler bylaw and report back on how its compliance and enforcement provisions could be strengthened so as to deter peddlers from operating illegally within the city and thereby ensure greater fairness for local businesses.
Counselor Nero, did you want to speak to this first, or did you want me to speak to it?
Whatever you like, Mr. Mayor. It was your notice of motion. I moved it, but it's your choice.
Sure. Well, this, the genesis of this was, you know, shortly after I became mayor, a number of people in the business community reached out to me and raised this issue with me. And I looked into it, and not much came of it, and then the issue just never went away. And it's, it's something I've got repeated calls on, and it's something I've gotten calls on lately, and there was some discomfort in, in actually, you know, making the complaint, but one of the businessmen gave me a list of names, and I called through some of that list, and every one of the people I contacted said it was occurring, and it was having a deleterious effect, and there were large quantities of product being sold from, from a vehicle. And I talked to legal, and legal thought it would be a good idea to take a look at the bylaw. I want to note that it indicates that complaints have been made to the city, which we know to be correct, and police services, which we know to be correct. I also include Algoa Public Health, because the businessman had told me they had made complaints to Algoa Public Health, and they never, it never got anywhere. Algoa Public Health said they told us, the city, when they read the notice of motion, they didn't have any record of any complaint. So I don't sure what the, where the disconnect there is, but that's in there based on the notion that different business owners had told me they had went to that agency, and that agency said, "Look, you have to go to, through the police services." So, you know, we, we haven't gone anywhere, but notwithstanding that, we still have this truck coming to town doing a large quantity of business, and admittedly, by the admission of some of our own business owners, having quite an effect on our business owner. So I thought this was one way council could approach it, and I'd also like just to recognize the issue broadly, and just, just indicate to the community that this, whomever is buying off this business person, I've never met them, it is having an adverse effect on some of our local kind of small businesses. So, you know, I think we should be mindful of that. And, in that spirit, I drafted this motion and talked to Counselor Nero, because he, he got some complaints at the same time I got complaints, and we got very similar information, and we were both trying to deal with it at the same time. So I told him I was gonna bring this forward, and he was agreeable. If him or Counselor Shoemaker have any comments they want to make, we can accept those, and any other questions, we can answer them. So we'll start with Nero, then Shoemaker, and then Fatah.
I'll just add, Mr. Mayor, that you, we look at this resolution, and it's not looking for a ban on peddlers that operate within the city. Rather, it wants to address the fairness, to get a level playing field between local business and peddlers. We have to understand that peddlers that operate within this municipality but are not located in this municipality are taking revenue from the local economy. We allow them, but as long as they play by the rules and it's, it's legal, then, then it's okay. And, and I don't think the business community would have a problem with that. It's when there's an unfairness to this game, and that's what's been happening. Local businessmen pay taxes to operate their businesses, peddlers don't pay taxes in the city, so they should have a license to operate. That's what this is about, is to get some fairness in the local business.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Nero. Counselor Shoemaker?
Those, those were my comments exactly.
Okay, Counselor Fatah?
Just on the same point, and people, I'm sure that most people in this, on council have gotten calls regarding businesses that are operating out of people's homes. We dealt with one a couple of years ago, where he was operating an office supply business in the East End for about 15 years, and then he came to council because there were complaints from the neighbors. But just recently, somebody brought that to my attention. I think this is also, this is a valid point, because a peddler comes in here once a month or whatever, every two weeks, but the person that's operating out of his own home illegally is operating every day. And this individual that I was speaking to was, was very concerned about that, because he knows that he's losing business. And that's the, that's the responsibility of MPAC. Shelley? I guess MPAC would be responsible to make sure that these businesses that are operating out of people's homes...
Counselor Fatah, we gotta stay on this issue, though.
Well, it's sort of on the same topic, though, you know, unfairness.
Yeah, but then if you want to bring a motion dealing with that...
I'm not really, I guess I'm just making a point here on, on this item. I mean, it's not something that we have to act on. It's the fact that it's a responsibility of MPAC to make sure that these people that are operating businesses illegally are accounted for, and if they are, then they're gonna be paying taxes and therefore doing things fairly.
Okay. So Counselor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I did receive emails regarding...
You did or you didn't?
I did.
You did.
The, this so-called individual. So I called City Hall to find out if this individual has a permit, and I was told, yes. Now, can you confirm if he has, if this particular person has a permit or not?
I don't, I don't know.
Does anybody know, besides me?
I, we didn't name anybody in the, in the motion, and...
Well, this is because of one individual that we received the emails, right? Am I correct on that?
I received a number of complaints about one specific...
Exactly, yeah. So is this resolution that we have in front of us, is it because of the one individual?
That precipitated the, the request to have legal look at the peddler bylaw, to make sure the pedro bylaw, the peddler bylaw is significant enough to deal with, with different types of misconduct in our community. Yeah, it wouldn't, the peddler bylaw can't be redrafted to address one specific person, but when I went to legal and said, what's the, what are the issues here, and how do we address them? They said, well, we'd have to look at the peddler bylaw. Therein lies the motion.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just confused, because if this is, if this individual comes to town but buys a permit from City Hall, what is he doing wrong?
I don't know, I don't know if anybody's doing anything wrong. We're taking a look at the peddler bylaw.
You're just looking at the bylaw for the peddlers?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough, then.
Counselor Butland?
Yeah, I, yeah, we're, we're gonna address the bylaw, and I think all, the majority of people are saying this is over one peddler who's doing a very lucrative business, and he makes appointments for certain neighborhoods, and customers come in and purchase wine and cheese, et cetera, et cetera. So if there is one, surely we would be able to address that. Can you sell liquor and wine from a truck? And so addressing the entire bylaw, well, let's go there, but can we address this individual? I don't know, it's a rhetorical question.
It is a rhetorical question, yeah.
I think we should be able to.
Does the police matter if you're selling liquor back here?
Sure, sure. So anybody else in the matter? All in favor? Carried.
Under 8.3, Weekend Downtown Street Closures, a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Hollingsworth. Whereas the Downtown Association's strategic plan calls for increased events and an extended season to bring more people downtown, and whereas the City of Susie-Saint-Marie Downtown Strategy wishes to encourage active use of downtown spaces, now therefore be it resolved that staff with input from the Downtown Association examine the possibility of closing Queen Street from East Street to Gore Street to traffic on Friday and/or Saturday nights from Victoria Day to Labor Day each year, in an effort to both encourage active use of the downtown space and to increase events downtown.
Okay, Counselor Shoemaker, that's your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just, you know, throwing out an idea and seeing if there's any uptake from it from the Downtown Association, our planning department staff. I've, you know, I think it's been five or six meetings in a row now. We've had downtown initiatives or Downtown Association initiatives on the agenda, and all are sort of working to that goal, to bring more people downtown. And so this was one that I had thought about, that I hadn't seen come forward, so I drafted up the resolution, thanks to Counselor Hollingsworth for seconding it. I very briefly spoke to Josh Ingram tonight before the meeting, and he thought it was definitely worth the discussion. So, you know, let's, let's see what's possible. Let's see if it, you know, any combination of things could be brought forward, any combination of nights over the course of the summer. We get a sort of very limited summer season here, so the most we can make of it, it's worth an effort to see, you know, what that is. So I, I'm hopeful that this will pass.
Anybody else on that motion? Counselor Fatah?
Just wanted to make reference to one particular business owner who, who's west of Elgin, and he, he was commenting about the recent events of downtown and so on, and he said, he was very upset with the, with the way things went, because he said to me, quote-unquote, he said, "The only people that came into my, my place was to use the, to use the washroom." Like, he was not seeing the type of, the type of response that I think we would like to see happen when we do have events downtown, like cruising and so on. And to close all of Queen Street, all the way down, I think it's something that this individual would certainly not be in favor of. It seems that when we have Busker Fest and we have various events, it seems like all that concentration is from East Street to, to about March, I guess, that that's where most of the, where most of the businesses are certainly, certainly more concentrated. So there's, there's more, more things, there are more people, more stores and that. So for a person that has a, has an establishment, let's just say, west of Elding, for example, it's, it's something that, that it should be, we should be very careful about, that's all, as far as this, this particular approach. All downtown doesn't function the same when it comes to these various events. It just, it seems like the area... the area east of Elgin seems to be more activity, more traffic, more... And yet, going further west, it doesn't seem to be the case. So some businesses might not be in favor, but that's all I want to say.
Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we just got through, finished with the Queen Street Cruise, as everyone knows, and we did have a closure there. But Josh Ingram is here. He's in the gallery. Counsel Shoemaker has spoken with him. And I believe that obviously the input's going to come from the downtown to get a report back here on this. And I know that there's a lot of people that thoroughly enjoy being able to walk down Queen Street when it's closed. But, you know, it is a very diverse area from Pym right through to Gore, really. So we'll be looking forward, I think, to the input from the Queenstown or, excuse me, Downtown Association. It's their area. It's their venue, as I always say. And I think that they'll give us the input that will help guide us on this. So I look forward to hearing back on this matter. It's certainly a good idea to consider it.
Okay. I think we're all probably agreeable. Can we vote on the matter? All in favor? Carried.
Under agenda item eight point four, Vacant Council Seat, a motion by Councillors Christian and Shoemaker. Whereas City Council was faced with filling a vacant council seat in Ward Six after former councillor Romano was elected to the provincial legislature, and whereas councils of the past have been faced with similar challenges, and whereas it is likely that council vacancies will occur in the future, and whereas there are no formal policies and procedures that currently exist which guide council, city staff, and the public through the challenges of filling council vacancies, now therefore be it resolved that council requests that the city clerks department provide a report with recommended policies and procedures that can be adopted to deal with future council vacancies, and further that any such recommendations being offered give consideration to the time remaining in council's term, the methods by which the public will be notified of such vacancies, and any procedures that they will follow, and the procedure staff will follow for each of the recommendations being offered in the report.
Counsel Christian, before you get to that, I want to point something out. I had made a comment earlier that said, "Well, that's probably not in the municipal act," as in drawing a name. And after we went through everything we went through, I was thinking to myself, there had to be kind of a better way to do this. So I was flipping through the Municipal Elections Act. I thought I wasn't paying attention to you folks. But I was flipping through the Municipal Elections Act, and the actual reality is it is in there. And I'm just going to read to you the section from the Municipal Elections Act. Now, mind you, this relates to when we have a general election, but I think what the clerk's office does is take the policies as a general election and apply them to our processes. "If the recount indicates that two or more candidates who cannot both or all be declared elected to an office have received the same number of votes, the clerk shall choose a successful candidate by lot." So it actually does put the responsibility on him to choose. If you can believe this, this is the legislative framework that we work within. So, you know, it's... I think your motion is apropos, and I appreciate why you're looking for it. I just wanted to let you all know, when I did say, "Well, that's probably not in the act," I was just kind of speaking. And then when I actually went and looked, not in the municipal act, because actually it is in the municipal act. When you look at the Municipal Elections Act, it does provide for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you read part of the municipal act, I think most of council's aware that we basically have two choices. We're required under the act to either appoint or hold a by-election, except, of course, for the last 90 days of a sitting council, which in that case, we don't have to fill the vacancy. So we sit as councillors for four years, and I think it's pretty obvious that all levels of government recognize that we need to do a fair, transparent, and open process to fill seats. You know, and a great deal of time is put into the procedures and steps to ensure proper representation in a general election. So the thought here is that even though it's just a temporary filling of a seat, I think we as a council could do our part to try to make it more credible than it already is. It seems only right that the same level of care and thought be invested into our own procedures to fill council vacancies, because I think its failure to do so undermines the entire process. And quite frankly, I think it doesn't serve us very well. It doesn't say much about the role we play if we don't have, make an attempt at least, to put in our own procedures. So I'm just asking staff to create a report with some suggestions about what we can do going forward. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's very apropos at this point. We've just gone through what we went through, and just informally speaking to some councillor, it wasn't councillors, it wasn't a very rewarding experience. So I'm asking staff to try to put together a report with some recommendations. I think the way we handle a council vacancy, say in the first year of a sitting council, maybe we look at the election results from the prior election, but we apply certain numbers or qualifiers in order to fill that seat by appointment by using the prior election. Maybe through years two and three, we have a by-election. We can't turn our backs to a by-election. We know it costs money to do so, but it is a democracy, and we have to invest in our own democracy. How we handled the last year perhaps is something different. So I'm not trying to suggest a plan. I'm simply asking that the clerk's office take this request and see if we can put something together for council to consider so that we don't have to go through what we just went through.
Okay. Well, Counsel Myers, and then Counsel Shoemaker?
I just have one question that I don't know if the clerk will know the answer or not. But I remember a number, well, many, many, many years ago, I guess councillors were even one term way back, but I remember there were two-year terms. Then it was three-year terms for many, many, many years. And the term before I came on, then it turned to four years. So through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. White, has this changed? Like, because that's part of where we're at now. We now have a fairly long period of time where a lot can happen in a four-year period. But when council terms used to be only one year or two years, obviously it was a little bit different. Has the municipal act sort of changed over those years because of the length of term that a councillor has? I'm just curious to understand a little bit about that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To Counsel Myers, I'm not sure how the legislation dealt with one- and two-year terms. They did exist. Certainly, my experience has just been with the three- and the four-year terms. The... I can tell you, the legislation didn't change a whole lot in going from a three-year to a four-year term.
Thank you. And I guess because I know that what we talked about here, quite frankly, this evening is, I'm sure that some of us would have been happy if we could have had a longer consideration than 90 days. 90 days isn't very much time in a four-year term to have the option of not filling the seat. 90 days would be quite a bit of time if you were only in a two-year term. So I guess, and I realize that's municipal act now. So is there any conversation at AMCTO at all on this matter? This is not unique to Sault Ste. Marie. Four-year terms are the same all over the province. So is this something that comes up anywhere else? Is there...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To Counsel Myers, on that particular topic, not really. I think you would have to remember that not all councils across Ontario have two members per ward. If you had a case where you just had one member per ward, you would have a ward then unrepresented for longer than a 90-day period. And I think that really the province would look at it as that's the outside limit, that they would wish to see a group in a community unrepresented.
Thank you.
Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really more just following up on Counsel Christian's comments. I think some options would be good when this came back, you know, not just you could do it this way, but here are a variety of ways that you could do it so that we could sort of have a full sense of what our options are going forward.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Clerk, you understand that resolution?
I do.
All in favor? Carried.
Counsel, we do have a notice of motion that's been brought forward tonight by Councillors Fatah and Hollingsworth. I will read it, and then it will be considered at the July 17th council meeting. Whereas council has chosen to undertake the steps necessary for the development of a splash pad at Bellevue Park based on an analysis of two proposed locations, the other being Curg Park, and whereas the Downtown Association was not invited to participate in the public consultation process to present the view of its members and therefore believes that significant factors contributing to the decision were not adequately considered by council, and whereas the Downtown Association feels it's important to have a wholesome discussion to present its position as to the merits of a downtown location to downtown revitalization, the community as a whole, and specifically to the strategic direction of downtown as identified in success of downtown improvement plans and the city's downtown strategic plan, now therefore be it resolved that council reconsider the location of the proposed splash pad project, and further that if council approves said reconsideration, the Downtown Association have an opportunity to present to council in support of reconsidering the proposed location of the splash pad from Bellevue Park to a downtown location. As mentioned, that motion will be considered at the July 12th... or, sorry, July 17th council meeting. This brings us to bylaws. Counsel, we have two bylaws that had a pecuniary interest declared. Bylaw 2017-132, pardon me, of a motion by Councillors Kompadich and Christian, resolved that bylaw 2017-132 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract between the city and Superior and Industrial Services for electrical and exterior lighting upgrades at Strathclere Park and to approve the allocation of $27,000 from the 10% athletic field fees portion of the Parks and Recreation Reserve be applied to this project be passed in open council this 26th day of June 2017.
All in favor? Carried.
A motion by Councillors Kompadich and Christian, resolved that bylaw 2017-136 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract between the city and Avery Construction Limited for the removal of an existing seawall and the replacement with a sloped rock revetment at 711 to 719 Bay Street, contract 2017-6E be passed in open council this 26th day of June 2017.
All in favor? Carried.
Motion by Councillors Kompadich and Butland, resolved that all bylaws under agenda item 11 under date 2017-0626 be approved, save and accept 2017-132 and 2017-136.
All in favor? Carried.
Motion by Councillors Butland and Christian, resolved that this council proceed into closed session to discuss an issue under the Companies Creditors Arrangement Act, and further be it resolved that should said closed session be adjourned, that council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by Councillors Kompadich and Butland, resolved that this council now adjourn.